Okay. All right. Let's call this meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kaplan. Councilmember Dickinson is expected momentarily. Vice Mayor Talamontes. Councilmember Pluckebom. Thank you. Councilmember Maple.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gera.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And Mayor McCarty.
Here.
Mayor McCorm.
Okay, Councilmember Talamontes, please listen to the pledge. And land acknowledgement.
Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanom people, the Southern Maidu, Valley Plains Miwok, Patwin-Win Tun peoples, and the people of the Wiltown Ranchea, Sacramento's only federally-recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
And city attorney, do we have a report out from closed session? No report out. So Mayor, you have one special presentation this evening, recognizing GIS team during Geography Week and GIS Day, and Councilmember Pluckebom is going to make that presentation.
All right, and I left the resolution upstairs, but I hope everyone is able to find their way here. Is there anyone here looking to be recognized? I'm not seeing who. There you are. Come on up, guys, come on up. These are the mapmakers for the city of Sacramento. This is how we're able to find our way. So for those of you that use any of the city's wayfinding tools, I came to know and love your tools most intimately through the redistricting process. Is there anyone that would like to say anything on behalf of the group? Otherwise, what we want to do is recognize you and say thank you.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Dan McCoy. I'm the GIS manager for the city. On behalf of the city's GIS team, I wish to thank you for taking a moment to recognize GIS Week and GIS Day here in Sacramento. GIS Day is tomorrow. Special thank you to Councilmember Pluckebom for this recognition and helping us shine a light on the work that goes on behind the maps and the dashboards that many of us use every day. For those of you who may not be familiar, GIS stands for Geographic Information Systems. It's how we connect data to location. It helps the city understand where things are happening, why they're happening, and how we can make smarter, more equitable decisions for our residents. Our GIS program started more than 30 years ago. It's grown into a citywide resource that supports almost every department. GIS supports everything from 311 service requests and 911 emergency response to infrastructure planning, land use, and special districts assessments. In short, GIS helps connect people, data, decisions across the city, and we're really proud of the impact it has on everyday operations and long-term planning. Thank you again, Mayor and Council, and Councilmember Pluckebom, for recognizing Geography Week and GIS Day and for your continued support of the GIS team and the work that we do to help keep Sacramento and Form connected and moving forward.
Would you like to join us for a quick picture?
Sure. Okay. You have nothing? GIS, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, go. Thank you. Do you want to join us, Mindy?
I am sorry, I was actually coming out.
What? What? What?
Who's directionally challenged?
Everyone say GIS! Geographical information systems.
Great, thanks so much.
My office, mouse!
Hey, hey, thank you, guys. Appreciate it, brother. My favorite class in the GPA.
Mayor Protem Gera, are you punched up for this item or for our next?
For consent, is that?
Perfect.
Okay, yes. Items 14 and 29 and 30.
Councilmember Vang.
Thank you. I'd like to make a comment on item 29 and item 23 as well.
23?
Hold on real quick.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Item, speak on item 7, 13, and 20.
Okay, were there other items that councilmembers wanted to comment on or pull? Seeing none, let's go to Councilmember Kaplan on item 7.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm really excited that we are moving forward for North Natomas to get a bike and pedestrian crossing on the Jack Rabbit Trail, which crosses Arena Boulevard. We all know public safety and transit and keeping it safe is really important. Jack Rabbit Trail starts in my districts and goes down through our vice mayor's as well. And without adding this traffic signal, people would have to go over to Truxell out of their way, and you know people are not going to do that. So this is just another way to create increased quality of life and pedestrian safety so that everyone can enjoy the Jack Rabbit Trail. And I have been told that this is going to get installed in the next six to nine months, so I really want to thank city staff for moving forward with this and then all that you've done to make it a possibility to increase safety in North Natomas and crossing Arena. Thank you.
Would you like to go to item 13 now?
Want to bring up on item 13, it's the Citywide Transportation Development Impact Fee. And, you know, as a council, we talk a lot about how do we bring equity and equality? And you look at where our transportation impact fees are coming in. 20% of the fees come from development in North Natomas, but the projects that are being funded, not one of them have to deal with North Natomas. And I hear on a weekly basis complaints about needs for road improvement, infrastructure, more bus paths, you know, support that Natomas brings in the money for the city, but we don't get our equity fair share of investment. And I know part of this goes off of our transportation priority plan, but I can tell you, North Natomas is fairly upset that we provide a decent chunk of the fees and yet see nothing return in benefit. And so my community is asking for a fair share review in that.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Gera on item 14.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. First, I just, I wanted to thank our mayor, Mayor McCarty, and our city staff for this item. You know, Little Saigon in District 6 has a very proud history, a history that comes from the refugees who came here after the fall of Saigon. And it was through their effort that a lot of the economic development that's occurred there has created a sense of culture, a sense of community. And I do want to thank our mayor, who led the effort to designate that area as Little Saigon. And now, through his time as Assemblymember McCarty, he was councilmember then and as Assemblymember McCarty, he was able to secure some funding here to create some signage, real entry signage, and creating a gateway to recognize the history of all of those that were Vietnamese, Mian, Mong, Indo-Chinese that have built up what was Old Highway 99, Stockton Boulevard. So with that, I just wanted to say thank you, you know, to our city staff for the work on this, but more importantly, I also want to thank our mayor for his commitment to Stockton Boulevard. And Councilmember, Assemblymember Roger Dickinson, who voted for it also. He's an assemblymember as well at that time and was on the Board of Supervisors for that, yeah, on 99, yes, yes. Exactly. So thank you again for your work on that. Long time coming.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan on item 20.
Yes, I have a quick question of staff. I sent in an email but did not get a response if Ophelia or somebody on item 20, Amber or Matthew Johns is here to answer a question. If you look at item 20, which is supplemental agreements to the Master Services Agreement for On-Call Construction Inspection Services, and this is publishing for its 10-day review, I did look at this, and it is basically extending or doubling every contract that we have on this. You know, it's hefty. It's, you know, 19-plus million dollars. Where is that money coming from? Because I asked for that as we look at facing a looming budget deficit and wanting to make sure I understand where money is coming from.
Sure. Hi, my name is Amber Castle Keen. I am a senior engineer in the construction inspection section of public works. I've never stood up here before, so is there anything else you need from me? So these contracts are for our inspectors that inspect the large development projects or the encroachment projects or any other variety of those. So the money does not come out of, from a majority of our projects that we do. It comes from the development projects that are done by the developers. So it is, for the most part, the funding for them is fully backed by whatever the developer is doing in the right-of-way.
Okay, so it's not general fund?
No.
Okay, that was a, I saw that, but that wasn't clearly stated in the staff write-off. So I think it's really important when we're spending that much money that that's just made clear. And congratulations on your first time standing in front of us. You did great.
Thank you.
Let's move to Councilmember Vang on item 23, then 29.
Thank you, city clerk. I just have a comment on this item and then just a question for city staff from Economic Development. This is regarding Rail Yards Special Sign District. I know that this past summer, mayor and council unanimously voted for the expansion of the EIFD, but it was later delayed for a year because of a resident protest vote that took place. One of the leverages that we had as a city in negotiation was included in a term sheet. That included, one, security for three years with the possibility of extending it for 35 years, which was $3 million of PD service. And the second was providing revenue of billboards directly to the developers as an expansion of the EIFD. I just wanted to state for record to the public that this item, item 23, is for pass for publication, and the purpose of it is to establish the boundaries of the Rail Yards Special Sign District. And it is not, my understanding, it is not to direct where those revenues will be going. And so my understanding is that staff will bring forward one or more ordinance that will actually provide sign regulation for each of the five sub-districts. And I just do hope that we can discuss regulations of leases and revenue in larger context, given that it was originally part of the conversation for the expansion of the EIFD. And so my question for staff is, this is mainly just to establish the boundaries for the sign, but what is the timeline when the item will actually come back to council to discuss and finalize the lease and the revenue for the billboards?
So this is a pass for publication for the ordinance, and then the ordinance would follow, I believe, on December the 2nd.
Okay.
We will be returning to council in January with the actual lease arrangements for the signs themselves. So into the new year is when it will be returning.
Okay, great, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. I had several community and residents reached out to me of what we're voting on today is actually determining if signs, revenue from the billboards will be, is that part of this ordinance? And the answer is no, is that correct? Just want to make sure that's on record.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you.
And Councilmember Vang, do you have comments on item 29? We'll move to that.
Thank you, yes. This is for the approval of the Sacramento Employment Training Agency. I believe Mayor Protem Gera has queued up for this as well. As many of you know, we have an open seat on SETA for a public member, and it is a two-year term. Both Mayor Protem Gera and I serve on SETA, and we were excited during our last SETA meeting to appoint Dr. Stewart, who currently serves as the Vice President of Instruction at Sacramento City College. I had the opportunity to actually meet with him and have coffee, and I'm really excited for the partnership. One, because our community college serves a large underserved population, particularly parents who have greater need in terms of childcare work and their educational goals. And so I'm really excited and enthusiastic about this partnership. I think this is going to be really key for the work that we do at SETA in terms of childcare support and workforce development. And so just wanted to, I know we're going to vote on this today, and hopefully my colleagues will pass this, but really excited to have Dr. Stewart be part of the SETA board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Gera on 29, then 30.
Great, thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll speak to 29 and 30 all at once here. And I wanted to just, again, as the new Chair of the SETA board, and I want to thank, you know, my colleague and the other board members involved to look at what a public member on this board should be, should qualify as, and what kind of value they could provide. And I'm excited that the board has nominated Dr. Davon Stewart to this position. Not only does he come from faculty, starting as a faculty member at Los Rios District, but now as the Vice President of Instruction at Sacramento City College. You know, he helped secure funding and start the new STEM building. He launched programs to help graduate students on time and increase transfer rates to other colleges. And excitingly, and, you know, with a lot of passion from his own family history, he's worked with immigrants that have been instrumental in our community and helping all of those resources as faculty and students needed in our entire district here. And so one of the interesting, unique things about the SETA board is not only is involved in workforce development, but it manages our Head Start programs. And in his role, he also oversees a lot of the childcare facilities as an administrator. And so it's important to have someone here who's looking at, not only on the workforce development side, but ensuring that we have someone who can, who understands the need for affordable, quality, and available childcare so that families can get the training and education they need and also the ability to work to increase their future potential. So with that, and with that and the exciting work that we have here, along with accepting the grant that's identified here in the staff report as well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the consent calendar for this and welcome Dr. Davon Stewart to the Sacramento Employment Training Agency.
Thank you.
And then, Mayor, I have only one speaker on the consent calendar. Lambert on items four and 10.
Yeah, as Lambert's walking up, I just want to note that in the spring of 2021, on my little iPhone here, I put in my notes section, potential investments in the state budget. And that was a record surplus year. And so one of my observations at my first state of the city is things take too long. But five years later, I see from my notes was Two Rivers Trail, Jack Rabbit Trail, and Little Saigon Monument. So good things come to those who wait. And so certainly pleased to see these projects come to fruition. And yeah, let's get to work. Thank you.
Mr. Davis.
I'm actually speaking on four and nine. I think it was, no, four and 10, excuse me. The reason I'm here is because District 2 is the only district in Sacramento that has over 20 communities. And when you have 20 communities, and I'm a native, I'm a stickler for where that money goes. And if you look at number four, it talks about Dixie and Alleyways. That's a peculiar amount of money coming supposedly from the general fund, and then, you know, they combine Measure U monies. So we're studying that. That's just one of the 20-something districts. It's one of the most gerrymandered districts in California, District 2. Now District, number 10, it means something to me because it talks about Harry Rentfree Field renovations. This is, as a teenager, I actually played here, so I know this field. And it's not just for the field. They should stop saying it's just for the field because there's some very expensive homes behind Harry Rentfree Field, and I believe that's behind it. Also, I see where the city manager's office is able to expand something into $3.34 million. My question is, was it bid it out? Because if it wasn't bid it out, it's really, to me, a violation of the Brown Act. I'd like to know, how can you have a contract and then all of a sudden you can take it to $3.34 million and the public doesn't even know, was it bid on? And it even says Measure U. So Measure U and the general fund being combined, that's why you have that controversy.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers. You have a motion by Mayor Protem Gera and a second by Vice Mayor Talamontes.
Halls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
He knows our abstentions.
Yes, that motion passes unanimously. We now move to item number 35, which is a public hearing. It is a city council housing authority item, which is approval of the 2026 Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency proposed budget and adopting a multifamily loan and mortgage revenue bond application schedule.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Kay Junta. I am pleased, I'm sorry, Kay Junta with Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, Assistant Director of Finance. And I am pleased to share with you our 2026 proposed budget. Sorry, is it going to be on the screen?
Vice Mayor, before we get started, may I open the public hearing? Thank you. Thank you.
But yes, I am pleased to share with you our 2026 proposed budget reflecting a balanced plan that supports our mission to expand affordable housing opportunities and strengthen community revitalization throughout Sacramento. The budget brings together resources from federal, state, and local partners, and it represents a careful alignment of revenues and expenditures to ensure financial stability. As we walk through the details today, you will learn about both our funding priorities and the programs that have the greatest impact on the families and neighborhoods we serve. For the coming year, SHRA anticipates approximately $341 million in new resources. These resources represent the foundation of our budget and support the wide range of housing and community development programs we deliver throughout our communities. The majority of these new resources is derived from federal funding, which accounts for over 70% of our budget and is primarily through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. These dollars are critical in sustaining our largest programs, especially the Housing Choice Voucher Program and Public Housing Program. The remaining 30% come from state and local resources, including state and local housing trust funds, homeless housing assistance and prevention funding, permanent local housing allocation, as well as new opportunities such as pro instead of housing and green means go. Here's how these funds are allocated across our programs and operations. $216 million is dedicated to HAP payments. This is the cornerstone of our Housing Choice Voucher Program and provides direct rental support to families in need. $60.7 million is expected to go towards capital projects, ensuring we continue to invest in new housing development, rehabilitation of existing units, and community revitalization initiatives. $37.1 in salary and benefits is for the dedicated staff who administer these programs and deliver services across Sacramento. $19.2 million towards services and supplies, support the day-to-day costs that keep the agency running efficiently. $5.5 million in public services will go towards targeted programs that strengthen neighborhoods and support residents. $2.5 million in debt service allows us to responsibly manage long-term financial obligations. This distribution demonstrates how SHRA balances operational needs with program investments while ensuring the majority of our dollars go directly into housing assistance and community development. Now let's take a look at how the agency has trended since 2023. Operations have steadily grown from $250.7 million in 2023 to $280.8 million proposed in 2026. This represents a 12% increase over four years, driven primarily by growth in housing assistance. Capital projects, by contrast, have declined from $89.4 million in 2023 to $60.7 million in 2026 at 32% reduction. And this reflects the completion of major construction projects, such as completion of Marisol Village. Housing assistance payment shows a steady rise, primarily driven by increases in per-unit housing costs, reflecting inflationary pressures and rising market rents, rather than a significant change in the number of assisted households. By 2026, nearly four out of every $5 in operations growth are directed to housing assistance. Our major program is the Housing Choice Voucher Program. This slide highlights the trend in housing assistance payments, or HAP, alongside related expenses and reserves over the past several years. What you're really seeing here is not a sudden jump in the number of vouchers we administer. SHRA has long managed voucher utilization at a consistently high level. Instead, the upward curve reflects the steady rise in Sacramento's housing costs. As rents climb, the cost of providing assistance rises along with them. Funding for this program is tied to how many families we assist, but is also shaped by the federal appropriations process. Even when eligibility is strong, the dollars available depend on how much Congress allocates. That's where proration comes into play. In previous years, HAP funding was essentially fully covered, close to 100%, while administrative fees were supported in the 90% range. For 2026, however, both are projected to be in the 80s, meaning we will receive less than the full cost of providing these services. This forces us to request and compete for additional funds as demand and costs grow. This chart shows the revenue history of the agency's public housing program and how its role in our overall budget has shifted over time. Back in 2020, total revenues for the housing authorities reached $21.6 million. That was a temporary peak driven by one-time federal relief. Since then, revenues have steadily declined. The biggest factor is the reduction of operating subsidies, which continue to shrink each year. In 2026, we anticipate our biggest decline in support, estimating a proration of approximately 88%. In 2025, subsidies totaled $9.3 million, but for 2026, they are projected to fall further, to $7 million. This reflects both the declining number of public housing units and declining federal proration, which reduces the percentage of costs that are reimbursed even when we remain eligible. At the same time, tenant rental revenues are showing slight growth. In 2025, tenant revenues brought in $7.7 million. In 2026, we expect that to increase to $7.9 million. This modest improvement comes from stronger rent collection efforts as the agency has focused on ensuring resident contributions are collected consistently and on time. And now, Executive Director James Shields will provide additional updates impacting 2026.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Jim Shields, the acting executive director. And what I'd like to do is to take you through some of the federal and state issues that we're having right now. So on the state side, the Affordable Housing Support, the state has continued to support affordable housing, and the governor and the legislature has finalized a budget that provides $4 billion in resources to address affordable housing. Homeless Housing Assistance Prevention, the budget includes $1 billion for new housing homeless assistance prevention programs. Additional housing investments, $500 million added to the low-income housing tax credit program. $418 million for competitive multifamily housing or supernova from HCD. Home Key, finally, there's $2.2 billion granted for the new Home Key Plus program. Throughout the state, Home Key has added an additional $16 million homes throughout the last few years. On the federal side, on November 12th, the legislature and the president passed a continuing resolution through January of next year. We're used to a continuing resolution. In the 24 years I've been at SHRA, we've never had a full budget on time. And so this is not new to us. What was new to us was that 40-some-odd-day shutdown. So we continue to work, so we are fully budgeted and funded through January. One of the other issues we have is the impact on vouchers. And I've talked to some of you about the Emergency Housing Voucher Program. Unfortunately, it looks like that that is not being funded the way it was supposed to. It was funded for a 10-year program, and now we're a year and four, and we're out of money. We've gone from 494 units, we're now down at 440. On the national advocacy side, we work On the national advocacy side, we work tirelessly with organizations to put, to put through solutions that will preserve these vouchers. We received a HUD, a waiver from HUD to place the individuals with these vouchers at the top of our waitlist. Unfortunately, because we're in a state where we don't have any more money for vouchers, and once we lose a voucher, we can't put them on the waitlist. And so what we've asked HUD to do is to see if we can put them on the public housing waitlist. They have our requests, they have, and since they've been out for the last month, they have not answered our requests, but we would hope that we'd be able to put them on our public housing at the very top of our public housing waitlist. As Kay said, we take a balanced approach to the budget, and one of the things that we've really worked hard on is to look at our technology. We have some technology that manages the housing authorities. It's called YARDI, and it's at, it's at the end of life, and we're putting in a new system. It's going to be a two-year program. It'll be much more efficient and easier for the residents of Sacramento, Sacramento County, to access the system, get on the vouchers waiting list, and be able to get housing. So we think that's a good positive aspect. And on the national housing organizations, we work with the National Association for Housing and Redevelopment officials, and the council on large public housing authorities are advocating on your behalf to make sure that Congress understands the needs of the local housing authorities. The last on this one is the ten-year roadmap. What the ten-year roadmap does, the last one was done in 2010, it's supposed to be done every ten years by HUD. It hasn't been done since then. What this addresses are the capital needs for public housing. In today's dollars, the capital needs for all of public housing in the U.S. is a hundred and sixty-nine billion dollars. Our, our need for capital funds is a hundred and thirty million dollars, and so you can see we're well short of getting that kind of money every year. Homeless Response, the SARA program, just a few seconds on that. We managed that for the city and the county, and there was a hundred and eighty-five million dollars that we received in grants, and we were able to continue housing six hundred and six thou, sixteen thousand five hundred and seventy-eight households. Very successful program. We've come back before with you, and so it ended this year, though. Housing Finance, the organization that provides funding for all the projects that we work on. We distributed fifteen million dollars' worth of loans this year. We've renovated and/or produced a thousand new homes, or renovated homes, and we've worked on six Home Key projects, most of them are in the city, which created six hundred and twenty new housing units. We also partnered with Habitat for Humanity to create six new homeownership communities, and we provided two hundred and eighty-five home repairs for low-income families. On this slide, we're allocated eighteen point six million dollars on federal funding, and this is for our safety nets, and these are for all the programs that we have that, I went to the wrong slide. No, that's the right slide. Excuse me. Programs that fund complete public housing facilities, improvements, restrooms, different programs that we have that are used with CDG and home type of funds. What I wanted to do is discuss a little bit about the numbers of projects that we work on. We have two that are, that have been done so far in the city and four this year for the county. More importantly, we provide support for Meals on Wheels, four thousand seniors, home repairs for a thousand people, and support for six hundred and fifty people in shelters unhoused. That's this slide right there. Now, Asset Repositioning is our RAD program, our Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. And what we've done for the seven years, seven years ago, the governing boards approved a revised asset repossession plan for the public housing, which takes public housing into the private sector, puts them into where we have tax credit programs, we partner with a developer, and we're able to provide vouchers, RAD vouchers, and project-based vouchers, so that we can sustain those projects. Everybody that's in, that lives there gets to stay there, but it's much more efficient, and it's much more costly, cost-effective for us. And so this year, next year, excuse me, we're going to focus on the county. We've done most of them in the city, so we have three projects that we'll be working with the county on for the RAD program, projects. Asset Management, that is our nonprofit, Sharp. We have three nonprofits. We have Sharp, we have Phoenix Park, and we have, what's the other one? Shasta, excuse me, Shasta, excuse me. And those are the units that make up the, the LLCs, the light tech, the trend, and it's gone from seven years ago, zero to fourteen hundred. Those fourteen hundred are really public housing units that we transitioned into that. And last is Marisol Village, and I want to thank the City Council for all the support that you've lent, lent this organization to make this happen. It's been a long, long time, and it's cost a lot of money, but it's, it's gone from two hundred and fifteen units to four hundred and eighty-seven of, of mixed income. It's, it's, it's changed the neighborhood. We've added Light Rail, worked with RT on that. They've been a wonderful partner with us. We really appreciate that. And I just wanted to thank you. We're at the last stage in this. We have the new Child's Learning Center, which we're partnering with SETA on, and they are starting to have their, their teachers and their students start there real soon. And so I just want to again, thank you so much. This means a lot to the organization and also to all that you've added to our support there. With that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. We're going to take public comment first, and then we'll do mayor.
Yes.
Do we have any public comments?
Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers on this slide.
Okay, no speakers. Okay, sounds good. Councilmember Raybol.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Shields. I really appreciate all the information. I know there's some challenging times, but I just really appreciate you stepping into this leadership role now, especially the last few months, while we've been, you know, the shutdown, all kinds of issues, things that you can't predict, some that you can. So I just really appreciate that. I have a couple of questions. One is a general one, so how many people do we approximately, I, I, I understand you may not have the number off the top of your head, on our voucher waitlist, and then how many people on our public housing waitlist?
Does anyone know that answer? Mary Liz does. She has all the.
I was like, I need someone. You got the whole team here.
She knows it, she doesn't even have to have the numbers in front.
Yes. Great to see you again.
Good afternoon. On the HCV waitlist, the number's about ninety-seven thousand, and to be clear, those are applications. So if you go to our website, shra.org, and look at the Housing Choice Voucher web page and scroll to the bottom, you can see a monthly update with how many people or how many applications are on the different waitlist. And I'm saying that to be clear, because that doesn't necessarily mean ninety-seven thousand families, families can apply for multiple waitlist.
Okay. And then on, on the public housing side?
On the public housing side, the number is, I want to say it's about forty-two thousand. It's not quite as, as large, and that information is also by different waitlist.
Okay, that's really helpful. And I, and I, and I, I know that these numbers change, and I guess I'm curious, obvi, it seems like it's probably not ninety-seven thousand families in Sacramento that are waiting on the Housing Choice Voucher list, and so does SHRA periodically go through that and kind of determine how many people are still actively looking versus how many people might have been on there and don't, actually aren't looking anymore, so that there's an accurate number?
Yes, so, so there's different waitlists, and the answer's a little bit different for the different waiting lists. So some are site-based, and so, or for our project-based vouchers. And so we do periodically go through and, and check with the families to see, are they still interested or not? For our tenant-based voucher list, that's the one that most people are interested in, we typically open for just a set number of families that we feel we can serve in a two-year time period. And currently, there's, we opened it in 2022, and we received five, well, we received twenty, over twenty-three thousand applications, and we said in advance we were only going to take five thousand. So once the waitlist closes, we randomly select the five thousand to go onto the waitlist. It's currently at about thirty-five hundred, and we're moving through that slower than when we anticipated or expected, because we're in shortfall, there hasn't been the funding, as Mr. Shields mentioned.
And then do we know approximately how long people, people tend to be on the waitlist, or is that just completely random?
Again, it's going to be different for each of the waitlist. For the tenant-based waiting list, we opened it in 2022, so the longest that anybody's waited on that list has been since January, so three years.
Okay, thank, that's really helpful. I just wanted to make sure I wrote my mind around it, because I get questions about this. So one of the, I have two main questions. One is around the local voucher program. You'd mentioned, we know that it has been out of funds for some time, and there's a lot of different reasons for that, including the cost of rent and the, you know, not getting the anticipated or hoped revenues from the federal government. And I'm just kind of curious what this means in, in actuality on the ground. So, you know, for example, we have, you know, X number of people who have a voucher who are currently in a unit, and that voucher's paying for their unit, and then we have people who are on the waitlist. And so if you're someone who is in your unit, so the people who are in their units and they have their vouchers currently, are they paid, are they, is, are they going to be continue, to be able to be paid under the funds that we currently have, or are we unsure if we're going to be able to continue to do that?
So the funds are appropriated by Congress every year, so we are, so right now, through this year, through the end of this calendar year, our fiscal year, HUD has said that the funding exists to continue. There's a continuing resolution, as you've heard, that will cover through January, so we're waiting to see, but we fully expect there to be the funds in January. We have not heard that officially. And then beyond January, at this point, we, like everybody, is waiting to see what Congress approves.
Okay. And that's for the, the folks who are currently in units?
Correct.
Not necessarily folks who have vouchers who are trying to get in a unit?
So for everybody who has a voucher right now, we believe that there is funding for them. There's always about five hundred families that are in the midst of moving who are not associated with the voucher. So, and that, that's fluid. It changes every day, every minute, as families are, are in the process of moving. So at this point, we believe, based on history, and HUD and Congress are, are very reluctant, have not terminated assistance for someone who is currently housed yet through the voucher program. So we believe that that is, is something that will be covered, but we don't have vouchers for new families, for the families on the waiting list that you're asking about.
Okay, that's really helpful, because I, you know, I, we do get questions about this, and I know it's just a challenging time, and it's an issue that not, not only us, but all over the state and the U.S., we're, folks are trying to grapple with. The other question I have is, I'm not sure if it's connected, but I know for the COC funding for, for homelessness, the directive from the administration is to a thirty percent cap on those funds being spent on permanent housing. Does that impact SHRA in any way, or is that completely separate?
Well, that does impact, because SHRA oversees the Shelter Plus Care Program, which is funded through the Continuum of Care. And so in the past, the majority of funds have been used to support permanent housing, permanent supportive housing. And so with this change, with putting a cap on the amount of funding that can be used for permanent housing, the transition, the focus is transitioning to transitional housing, which in the past has not been an eligible activity. So this is a very, very big change, and will impact the families that are currently participating. Let me say also Shelter Plus Care is serving the folks who are the neediest for housing. They are folks who cannot live independently, that's why it's plus care. So we work in partnership with the supportive services to provide the care to folks who need that, a special assistance to be able to remain housed. So that is, is a concern, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. That's it for my questions. Just really briefly, I want to say that, one, you know, that we're, you know, we move mountains, make miracles happen with the, the few resources that we do have, so I just really want to thank you all and your team at SHRA for, for, for doing the Lord's work. But I also want to say it's really incredibly disappointing to see this federal administration take away needed resources and make it even more challenging to do what was already very difficult, right? It was already very difficult to, to get some of the most vulnerable people in our community housed, to keep them housed, and now it's, it's that much harder. And so I just want to recognize that and, you know, and say hopefully that we can all weather this storm together and continue to, to do good with what we do have, but it's just, it keeps getting harder each and every day. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. And you took my questions about the voucher system, so I am good to go, and I don't see any other council members bunched up. Councilmember, Mayor Protem Gera.
Yeah, just thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to thank your work with SETA at the facilities and anything we can do to reduce the transportation cost to get to some of the programs that we have. On-site services is, is critical. And, and finally, I, I do appreciate the folks at Marisol Village for working to do the e-bike voucher program outreach and trying to, you know, look at different multimodal ways, and if we can reduce the amount of, of costs in transportation, such as owning a vehicle with insurance and, and maintenance costs, and, you know, let alone the purchase itself. I think this, that, we, we need to do more of that in our public facilities. We started with the, the car share program at, at the Broadway location. I think all of those keys, pieces are key, but overlapping the services we do, I think it's critical. So thank you for that, Mr. Shields. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Jim, really want to thank you for your service and stepping into this and continuing to try and float the ship during this uncertainty. Just, just a couple of things if you could remind me of, because we know that we've got increased costs. We're getting less money from the state, we're getting less money from the federal budget.
Right.
This is about your, your budget. What measures has SHRA done, because we know we're going to have to tighten the belt?
Right, so, thank you for the question. We have frozen forty positions and unfunded them. So, and there are positions, and I'm still putting a chart together, but there are positions that are relatively, have, have not been opened that long, and so there's forty of them. That's a five and a half million dollar savings for us. So that's money that would continue to go towards the support of the HCV and public housing. We are not, we're looking at our unrep employees not receiving increase. We are cutting all travel. We are looking at consulting, you know, very limited consulting. So it's a bare bones budget for us right now. We want to be very conservative and make sure that whatever dollars we had went towards the programs. So a lot of administrative positions are being unfunded. And then the SARA program, which ended this year, those were open positions as well, so they were funded through this year, but they're not going to be funded next year.
Thank you for that, and I appreciate you making those, those hard decisions. I don't think anybody wants to do this. Speaking of, you know, and you've said a lot about HCV, what, and then, you know, unknowns with a federal budget.
Right.
You said you're funded through the end of January.
Yes.
Worst-case scenario, something happens again, and we don't have a budget. What do we, as the council, need to know? Where's a heads up? What decision-making may we have to make if it appears that you're not going to have any federal funding or money come in?
If we don't get the funding, we have enough money that we could probably keep most of the staff working to provide support for the residents. We won't be able to do, we won't probably have, people can't come in, we probably won't take phone calls, but we can continue to, if there are people have issues, we can try to work with them on that. But it's an unknown. What we really would have to work on is, we would need your support on outreach to the community, making sure people knew exactly what, what that meant, because there are five thousand landlords that are going to be. 5,000 landlords that are going to be need to communicate it with to let them know what happens if we don't get that cap money, because that means they don't get their payments. And so, we have, there's a lot of communications that are going to have to take place.
Well, and, and that brings up kind of the, what do we have in place if something like that would happen? And does it stay people getting kicked out if the federal government doesn't send in the money, or do people get notifications of you're going to get evicted? Because that's a big concern.
Good question. When landlords sign their contract, they agree not to evict a resident if they don't get their funding. So, they, they cannot evict them. They won't evict them. They won't.
And I think that's a good thing for us to get out, because that is, that is an unknown, and many of the residents don't, don't understand that, because there isn't available housing because of the cost and everything else. And so, this would also mean they would end up on our streets.
We were ready to come to you in early December to, if, if the continuation of the resolution wasn't signed, we had a, we have a contingency plan, and we will go to you and say, here's what we'd like to do. So, those are some of the things that we would do.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure those questions were asked, just if worst-case scenario happens.
Yes.
And just want to thank you for your service and stepping up.
Thank you.
And being a leader for all the employees as well.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So, I will close the public hearing and move this item.
I'll second.
Thank you. And then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
O's, abstentions? Uh, one abstention. Mayor McCarty.
Yeah, one abstention.
One abstention, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, now we're moving along to item 36.
And Vice Mayor, item 36 is also a public hearing, so we will go ahead and open that public hearing.
Public hearing has been opened, and if you can, introduce yourselves.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Kevin Collin. I'm the zoning administrator for the city of Sacramento. Um, joining me today is Kurt Skierski, Senior Planner, also Courtney Burdick and Greg Sandland, our Planning Director. Today, on your, for this agenda item, is an ordinance. On September 16th, we were before you requesting direction on what should this ordinance contain? And at that time, we had a staff recommendation and a Planning and Design Commission recommendation. From that meeting, we took your direction from the majority of council members, and we've attempted to reconcile that in a single ordinance reflecting that direction. I'm going to present those in the same format we did in September in terms of subjects, topics. And while I do so, I'll address both majority opinion and minority opinions of council members to help you understand what's included or not. First, first topic, we're talking about cannabis land uses, where they can locate. One significant factor in terms of regulation, we call sensitive uses. The ordinance presented today includes the staff recommended sensitive uses, as we presented in September, and as they are, they are listed on the slide before you. The types on the left, their locations, and their buffers on the, on the map to the right. These are distances from which cannabis businesses, dispensaries in particular, can locate. Schools is a mandatory prohibitive buffer. No dispensary may like go within that distance. As I'll explain in a moment, the rest have a little bit more nuance based on your direction. We have other business types besides dispensaries that I would characterize as industrial in nature. They are not storefronts, the public do not visit them. The schools' sensitive use would apply to those uses, which we call production and The buffer distance, we discussed in our prior meeting, the ordinance includes a 600-foot buffer distance. In our prior meeting, we also heard an alternative proposal for a different distance. In the staff report that we provided in writing and on the illustration before you in this presentation, there are, there are effects of having a larger buffer distance, in this case, from a school. If that buffer distance is increased, it does reduce the acreage where cannabis businesses could locate in an eligible zoning district by just about 28%. The council districts which are most affected in terms of reduction are Districts 1, 5, and 7. Showing a different representation of what that means in terms of actual properties, where these businesses located is now shown on the right by those different colors of zoning districts. Another alternative proposal presented at the prior meeting is rather than the staff recommended sensitive uses or the commissions that the state of California and the Business and Professions Code does list sensitive uses, and those are K-12 schools, daycare centers, and youth-oriented facilities. We have the first and the third of those included in the ordinance, not the second. If you apply those to, there we go, to eligible zoning districts, the effect of using the state uses versus the cities, the staff recommended, is about an 8% reduction, just over 750 acres, that are increased citywide. Districts 5 and 7 see a reduction in zoning districts and properties that, that could accommodate cannabis under that sensitive use scenario. Next topic that we talked, discussed concerns permit type. This works hand-in-hand with sensitive uses. The ordinance before you today includes an administrative permit for businesses of dispensary, production, and testing. For a dispensary, that permit option would exist when located more than 600 feet from a sensitive use. Consistent with the direction we received, we heard a desire for some flexibility to consider locations for dispensaries that might be less than 600 feet from a sensitive use, and this is all accepting a school. As I mentioned, a school is a prohibitive buffer, it's a firm line. That there should, the ordinance includes a conditional use permit that could be considered by the Planning and Design Commission for dispensaries that are closer than 600 feet. And then, of course, in the final column, lounges, consistent with our recommendation and your direction, are required under the ordinance to have a commission-level conditional use permit, period. Now, for all of these different permit types, I wanted to summarize, we heard an interest in being educated as a community member to know what may be coming, how to participate. Each of those permit options in the ordinance, we would provide notice for both types. Even though a hearing wouldn't be provided for an administrative permit, there would be two public notices provided, an application receipt and, and application decision for an administrative permit. In the middle column, when a decision is rendered, if you're a concerned citizen, what, what, or an applicant, you didn't agree with a decision, what could you do? The recourse options are provided for both permit types, for both an administrative permit and a conditional use permit. And then, finally, in the third column, consistent with your direction, conditional use permits would continue to be provided, a call-up provision, as they are today, so that a decision could be called up by the mayor or council member in whose district the business is located from a commission decision to this body for a de novo hearing. To give you a sense geographically, what does this mean in terms of who may decide for cannabis businesses? Where the salmon is indicating an administrative permit would be possible, based on our map at that point in time of sensitive uses. The purple is indicating properties that are less than 600 feet and would require a commission-level decision. Now, in terms of permit type, we did perceive another perspective, and that is that there should be a conditional use permit for all cannabis businesses. We'll defer to your direction should that path be chosen. Today, we do require them for all businesses. If you are more than 600 feet, that's a commission, that's a zoning administrator-level decision. If you're less, it's a commission-level decision. Next topic, consumption lounges. Although codified in Title V of City Code for Business Regulation Purposes, the zoning does not yet include this land use, the ordinance before you includes it and provides, as I mentioned, a commission-level permit required. They must by law be at a storefront dispensary, and for locational purposes, the ordinance uses the dispensary location as a determinant for where a lounge could be considered. And then, again, as I mentioned, a conditional use permit would be the ultimate requirement. We have a slight change in the ordinance in terms of the location criteria for consumption lounges. I would characterize what we've drafted as being a little too specific. We were not intending for it to be, in all instances, a consumption lounge within a building, specifically, which is what the ordinance in the packet includes. We instead intended for the location to conform to state law, as well as our Title V Business Regulations. And what this specifically would accomplish with the reworded language here is would allow a Type 1 non-smoking lounge to not be strictly within a building. It could be within an enclosed outdoor area that is not visible to the public, but again, not smoking. So, should you agree with the staff recommendation and move, we would ask that you include this in the motion. With those topics, I'll now move on. There are a couple of other, that we thought were substantive, important elements of the ordinance that were worthy of mention. The first is the inclusion of some new zoning districts. It was an idea at the beginning of this project, and we presented it previously. So, there would be three new zoning districts that would allow storefront dispensaries, and those are the C1, C3, and RMX zones, primarily in terms of location constituted in the central city or the, the grid area, but also distributed in much smaller parcels throughout town. Another recommendation concerns cannabis production, which is our industrial type, an umbrella for different business types. Currently, distribution is subject to a 2.5 million square foot cap within the Power End Alliance area. We're recommending that distribution be removed from that cap and not count towards the limitation, but the cultivation cap would still remain. Next, there is a new state business type of processing that we have integrated into the ordinance for consistency purposes to include it within production. We're getting to the end here. We also heard some direction about treating lawful cannabis businesses fairly or not having them be subject to different requirements should sensitive uses move in to their vicinity. So, the ordinance includes what we call a first-in-time provision. So, should a dispensary, for example, open up with, lawfully with permits, and over time, the next year, a sensitive use moves in, in the area within 600 feet, and then subsequently, this business decides to, to expand or alter, change in some way, that they will not, under this ordinance, be subject to any different requirements than they originally were. With that, I'll conclude our recommendation, is that you determine this ordinance exempt from CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, and that you adopt the ordinance amending various provisions of Title 17 relating to cannabis land uses. We believe that this ordinance is responsive to the cannabis study that has found cannabis has not had a negative impact on retail or industrial uses, has not increased crime above those of other businesses, has not had a negative effect on home values, and it has not produced negative economic effects on commercial and residential districts. Additionally, we think that the regulations we're presenting are equitable, fair, that they balance a variety of competing viewpoints. The standards that we're recommending, sensitive uses in particular as defined, are predictable, and that's an improvement over our current regulations. They are clear and verifiable for staff, business owners, and the community. The permit types that we're recommending, we believe reduce existing barriers appropriately in terms of cost and permit type. And we believe overall that this ordinance provides a more predictable outcome for cannabis uses that comply with prescribed standards. That's my presentation.
Thank you so much. We're going to take public comment now, and then we'll do councilmember questions and comments.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have 20 speakers on this item, so I will call a few of you'll line up in the middle aisle, we'd appreciate it. Maisha Bahati, Jennifer Copenhagen, Jeanette Carpenter, Joy Patterson, Joshua Lewis, Deanna Garcia. Maisha?
Good afternoon, council and mayor. My name is Maisha Bahati. I am the CEO of Crystal Nugs, our city's first black woman-owned dispensary, and I'm located here in Midtown. I want to start by thanking the council and OCM for carving out a pathway for social equity. If that didn't happen, I probably would not be standing here. I stand here in support of Title 17, as I hope to be one of the first consumption lounges in Sacramento to open. As a mother of three, I understand and respect the passion behind protecting our youth, but I also want to bring some kind of common sense into the conversation. After eight years of operating a licensed cannabis business, two years operating a very visible storefront dispensary on J Street, I have never, not once, had any minor attempt to get into our store. So, let's give our youth some credit. They're not trying to get into regulated cannabis dispensaries. Also want to point out just something I read in the comments as I was preparing. Back in 2023 in September, we as an industry stood before you asking for a reduction in our excise taxes, and the room was full of youth advocates that stated that a reduction would harm the youth programs, that our funding was essential. Yet, today, we stand before you trying to grow our businesses, and we're looked at as predators and, and risk of youth. So, can we be both? Can we be essential to fund these programs and predator at the same time? That's just my question I have. I fully understand that we're going to get a CUP. I went through that process before. I thought it was a process that really gave the community a voice. So, again, I, I hope that we can lead on economics and not fear, and I look forward to hopefully opening a lounge, and thank you.
Jennifer? And then, Jeanette?
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Copenhagen. I'm the HR manager at a therapeutic alternative, spoke before in September. I just want to thank you for considering our concerns related to onsite consumption, and more specifically, our healing tea garden. It means so much to be heard and seen as a positive contributor to our city, our community, and our local economy. I know a lot of hard work went into balancing the needs of businesses and the needs of the community. I urge you to adopt the ordinance as amended before you, and I thank you again for your time, consideration, and everyone's hard work.
Good afternoon, Mayor McCarty and Vice Mayor Talamontez, Mayor Protem Gera, and councilmembers. My name is Jeanette Carpenter. I'm here on behalf of Child Action. Since 1976, Child Action has empowered Sacramento County's families by connecting them to high-quality childcare. We are proud to partner with 4,204 childcare providers, and we serve 2,897 children across our community. We respectfully urge the city council to support the Planning and Design Commission's recommendation to include childcare facilities in the sensitive use buffer requirement for cannabis dispensaries and consumption lounges. The council also took direction on September 16th, and we would, we would also like to encourage that same recommendation to keep it, the childcare facilities within sensitive use. In addition, one of the staff proposals, rationales for retaining K-12 schools categorization as sensitive use applies equally to childcare. So, the current proposal had asserted that impressionable youth are those aged 6 through 17. However, that's incorrect, because childcare facilities can serve six week, they can serve 6 to 13 as well. So, for these reasons, we urge you to ensure that cannabis dispensaries and cannabis consumption lounges require the 16-foot buffer and include childcare facilities. Thank you for your consideration and your support for children, young people, as well as the young educators that serve them.
Next speaker is Joy, then Joshua. Next speaker is Joy, then Joshua.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and members of the City Council. The cannabis ordinance before you reflects the discussion and direction of the City Council to staff at the September 16th council meeting. This ordinance as presented to you today takes into consideration the conclusions of the comprehensive cannabis study and the concerns of community members, cannabis business owners, and customers that were expressed in the public hearings. It clarifies and defines sensitive uses and continues to require conditional use permit approval for dispensaries that propose to locate within sensitive use boundaries. I urge you to adopt the proposed ordinance amending Title 17 as amended by staff today. Thank you for listening to all the comments at the previous meetings and the work of city staff in developing the ordinance, resulting in clearer and improved regulations for cannabis in the city of Sacramento. Thank you.
Joshua Lewis, then Deanna Garcia, Kimberly Cargill.
Vice Mayor and council members, good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity to speak on this item. My name is Josh Lewis, and I serve as Government Relations Manager for Embark. We are a licensed and operating cannabis business in the city of Sacramento down on Mac Road. You've seen your locally licensed cannabis operators before you a few times now, over the past year or so, raising concerns about these proposed amendments. I'm here to focus on one, that the city must include existing cannabis retailers in the list of sensitive uses that's adopted tonight. Without that, these amendments will undercut the very businesses that Sacramento has already licensed, regulated, and relied on to build a stable cannabis program. The amendments being considered today were drafted more than a year ago without meaningful consultation with the operators who actually live under these rules. Since then, my colleagues and I have raised the same concerns repeatedly, and very little has been changed in the draft to address them. The framework before you still allows new retailers to be cited directly next to and in more sensitive areas than longstanding operators who made significant investments based on the city's original expectations and land use decisions. Cannabis retailers in Sacramento are simply asking for consistency. We're not asking for new accommodation, but rather to maintain the regulatory profile that we applied under. When the city first opened this market, it established buffers to ensure thoughtful growth, neighborhood compatibility, and a level playing field. Operators made numerous business decisions, signed long-term leases, and built their stores around these rules. Maintaining these protections matters because stability is what allows us to keep providing quality jobs, generating millions in tax revenue, and showing up for the neighborhoods we serve. Removing those guardrails now introduces unpredictability that no well-regulated industry can operate under. Oversaturation is a real risk across every retail category in this community, and cannabis is no different. When you combine that with higher taxes, strict compliance requirements, and competition from the illicit market, throwing out basic land use spacing is actively harmful to the very market the city has grown to rely upon. Sacramento deserves a cannabis ecosystem built on stability and intentional planning, not one forced into a race to them.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Deanna Garcia, then Kimberly Cargill, then James Allison.
Good afternoon. Karina, you look great sitting there in the mayor's spot, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. My name's Deanna Garcia. I'm a mother of five and a grandmother of one, longtime advocate for cannabis and patients' rights. And I thank the city for bringing us this far and all the hard work and great work that was done by the city staff. And I just ask that you accept and approve as written by the city staff, and bless you and happy holidays.
You give your comments. Kimberly, then James.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Kimberly Cargill. I'm the CEO of a therapeutic alternative, a legacy storefront dispensary in East Sacramento, planning diligently for many years now to provide an onsite consumption tea garden for our patients. The cannabis ordinance before you reflects the discussion and direction of City Council from the last meeting, and it takes into consideration both the concern of community members and the industry. I went through this ordinance with a fine-tooth comb as it directly affects my business, thus my life and my future, and I found the ordinance has taken into consideration the majority of my concerns to date and has remedied them at the direction of council. I'd like to thank staff for their hard work on this issue. I really appreciate the time and effort spent on getting this right the first time around. I've worked for years to imagine, design, and plan for our healing tea garden, and I'm hoping the last deterrent can be resolved, and we can move forward with our hard-laid plans. Oh, yay, I have a minute. So I'd like to say a few more things. I do agree with the dispensary-to-dispensary buffer, as you will hear from many people today. That's one thing we've been asking in numerous letters for. And then I also just wanted to talk to the community and let you know that we have been in operation for 15 years, and we have never had a child knock on our door or do a "hey mister" in our parking lot. We're highly regulated. We're mothers, we're grandmothers. We care about this community and care about the children. There are places in the community that they are maybe getting cannabis at a high school level. It's not the dispensaries. I'd love for the City Council to address that with the smoke shops and the hemp CBD that's on the market that we are seeing in schools and is dangerous. I'm actually studying cannabis in depth, scientific level, like the highest level possible. Cannabis has never caused a death until the synthetic cannabinoids arrived. That's what we really need to regulate. We need to protect our children from, so I'd love to see that at a future meeting. Thank you.
Give your comments. James Allison, Aaron Cardoza, Keher Rasa.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, council members, and staff. My name is James Allison. I'm the Executive Director of the Power and Alliance. We're a property business improvement district that represents over 1,300 businesses and nearly 30,000 jobs in Sacramento's manufacturing and industrial core. You can also make us out by the heavily impacted area where all of the cannabis businesses are in the bottom southeast corner of the district or of the city. I'm here today to offer our support for most aspects of the staff suggestion today. We're hugely supportive of cannabis consumption lounges. We believe that that's an exciting new opportunity presented to businesses in the city. We're also very excited at the prospect of being able to expand some of those buffer areas to reduce some of the heavy concentration that we have in Power Inn. Ultimately, though, we do have to ask that we strongly oppose a reduction in CUP requirements for any cannabis business. Ultimately, we believe that this makes sense. It's a age-restricted, controlled substance. The CUP process is undoubtedly overly burdensome, expensive, and time-consuming. It is that way for every single business in the city that requires a CUP. We aren't saying that we shouldn't address that problem, but it should be something that we address separately as something like our Streamline Sacramento Initiative, where we can reduce that burden on all businesses within the city. But ultimately, it provides an incredibly valuable resource to be able to provide some of those very tailor-made and custom recommendations in terms of conditions, and that's across the board regardless of the type of cannabis business. We're appreciative of the retention of the 2.5 million square foot boundaries that we have in our district for cannabis cultivation, but ultimately, we just must really ask a retention of that CUP process and to be a part of that seat at the table. Thank you very much.
Your comments. Aaron, then Keher, then Jennifer Pratt.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Aaron Cardoza, City Councilman. How you doing? Aaron Cardoza, and most of you guys do know that I do an after-school program with a different programs with our young men. Today, I brought out the school, Miracle University. This is a school located at a church, which Pastor Lovelace has opened up for us. I'm here today to not only talk about not having a cannabis close to a school. They said, okay, we're not going to have it by the they switched the words up in the miles of the school, but after school, when the bell rings, we still got to take care of our kids, right? And so I have programs that's at parks, around parks, around buildings, right in the heart of Del Paso Heights, where we have these education, where we teach our kids not to deal with drugs, not to go around gangs and gun violence. And most of our kids understand the value of their life, and when you put a cannabis club, they're saying, oh, well, they won't, none of the kids won't come and knock on the doors or ask about, but that's other places other than Del Paso Heights. They will come to somebody, ask a grown person to buy them some weed or buy them some drugs. They will rob them. Violence will happen. You can't tell me it won't in the neighborhood I grew up in, and I know that I served that community. So what we're asking, I'm opposing it. I don't, I'm not with it. I don't think that they understand how serious and dangerous it is bringing a cannabis club or even having a smoke session lounge around to where the kids smell it, and that's where they're immediately, what they're going to do is attract to that. And so I'm asking that you guys do not allow that to happen. I mean, cannabis clubs are mostly out far, industrial, where the kids don't even see it, and keep it that way. Thank you.
You give your comments. Keher Rasa, then Jennifer Pratt, then Ronnie Walton, Sr. Keher?
Hello. Good afternoon. Good evening to everybody. I'm Dr. Kadir Raja, the founder of the Miracle University Movement. We are a dropout prevention movement in Sacramento, California. Really briefly, our mission is to end the dropout crisis in this city. There's roughly 3,000 to 4,000 children who drop out of high school every single year in Sacramento County. We know that 80% of our incarceration, crime, homelessness, trafficking, all of that is tied to our dropout crisis. And so currently, we have over 100 students, some of our students are here, who are enrolled at the Miracle University School located at 24th and L Street in downtown at the Center of Praise Church. And one of the reasons that we are so successful is that the environment, the environment at, around Center of Praise Church, the environment around the Miracle School, which is at 24th and L Street, is a really positive conducive environment for our students. Our students, they are tied to internships that are located in the community, for example. And so you have stores, you have businesses, you have the capital. You have such a positive, clean environment around the school and the church. And so we want to keep it that way, and our students are thriving. And so we encourage you just to help us maintain a positive environment around all the schools in the city and keep the cannabis shops away from our schools and our churches. And we really appreciate you for your time and caring about the children and doing the right thing for our children. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Pratt. I have 10 more speakers on this agenda item, so Jennifer Pratt, Ronnie Walton, Mindy Galloway, Angelica Sanchez.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jennifer Pratt. I'm a product manager at a therapeutic alternative here in Sacramento. It's nice to see you all again. Thank you for taking the time to consider our thoughts regarding onsite consumption, and in particular, our healing tea garden. We're really excited to use this as an opportunity to educate our senior members and provide a safe space for socialization. It truly means a lot to be acknowledged as a positive part of our city, our community, and our local economy. We've been in operation for over 15 years near sensitive uses, and we've never had an issue with public safety. In fact, our community knows us for our security guards that participate in the Yellow Brick Road to make sure kids are able to get to and from school safely. I recognize the significant effort that you all have had in going into balancing the needs of a local business with those and the broader community with this issue. I encourage you to approve the ordinance before you with the proposed change to allow a Type 1 non-smoking lounge to be on-premise rather than within a building. And I want to, again, say thank you for your time and hope you have a wonderful day. Thank you.
Ronnie Walton, Sr.
To the mayor and the council, Pastor Ronnie Walton, I have my short friend with me to stand here with me. But I'm concerned, and it's already been mentioned, about having a buffer for churches and daycare. I don't know how we missed it. We met with the Planning and Design Commission. They brought that recommendation, I believe, to you, and I don't know how it didn't make it to this point, but we need a buffer. We need a buffer. I don't know how we passed it. Let me say this, and I don't mean to direct this to anybody, but many of you show up at our locations, faith-based locations. You talk to us for the vote. You tell us whatever you want us to do, not necessarily what you want us to do, but you listen to our voice. Well, I ask you to listen to our voice at this point. Give us a buffer. Give us a buffer. That's all we're asking for. We can't stop marijuana from being sold. It's illegal. Give us a buffer. Don't ignore us. Please, don't ignore us. Again, thank you for this time. All we're asking for, a buffer for faith-based daycares. Put us back on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mindy Galloway, Angelica Sanchez, Trey Ish.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and Staff. My name is Mindy Galloway. I am the owner and CEO of The Pocket Dispensary. And, you know, I just want to say thank you for your work on this project. It has been many years that we've been looking and talking about the consumption lounges, and then another many months of Title 17 cleanup, which I do appreciate the streamlining to make it easier on the city and for the industry as well. I think as an operator, I will say I do understand the gravity and the responsibility of being able to operate a cannabis lounge, and I know me and many of my fellow colleagues, you know, will do all that we can to do that responsibility and do our lounges in the right way to protect public safety and to be a good member of the Sacramento business community. I just really want to say thank you. I also asked to, as well, you know, add the buffer from dispensary to dispensary back into the land use, but more importantly, you know, I'm just really happy to see everything move forward, and I'm happy to be able to start planning and preparation to open my lounge, and again, I just want to say thanks.
Angelica, then Trey.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council, and staff. My name is Angelica Sanchez, and I'm here representing Perfect Union, a cannabis retailer that has operated in the city of Sacramento for the past 15 years. First, I want to acknowledge the significant work that has gone into these zoning updates. Thank you, Kirk and Kevin. The ordinance before you creates a transparent and more predictable path for operators while maintaining oversight. That said, we support the creation of two permit pathways, an administrative permit for projects that meet all standards and are not near sensitive uses, and the conditional use permit for sites that are within those sensitive use and buffer areas. This structure allows straightforward projects to move forward efficiently, reducing the long delays that often threaten a business during the planning phase, while still preserving the CUP process where additional review is appropriate. We also support allowing cannabis consumption lounges through the CUP process, which provides the proper level of scrutiny for this type of license. On allowable zones, thank you for including RMX, C1, and C3. This is a significant improvement. These additions open access to viable commercial areas, reduce unnecessary clustering, and support more equitable distribution across the city. Finally, I support an 1,000-foot separation between storefront dispensaries to maintain balanced distribution without limiting access or future growth. Overall, this ordinance represents meaningful progress to a more efficient, fair, and workable cannabis land use system in Sacramento. Thank you so much for your time.
Trey, then Davidson Clarity.
Thank you, Mayor McCarty and Council. My name is Trey Ish, and I am the CEO of Symbiotic Sacramento at a storefront dispensary in Sacramento. We've been in Sacramento for 16 years, same location. I'd like to thank you for amending Title 17. I think the changes you have made make sense, but my only ask is to keep the 1,000-foot buffer distance in between dispensaries. We don't need dispensaries right next to each other on every corner. The amendments that you have approved open up more zones, and I believe that there are areas in Sacramento that are underserved, and we should encourage new dispensaries and ones that want to relocate to look for those locations. Thank you very much.
You, David, then Alexis Angulo.
Dennis Clark, how y'all doing? Appreciate you guys' time. I'm one of the original people that ever got their medical marijuana license in Northern California by Molly Dale and Dale Schaefer. The idea of what we are doing today is not the idea what they had. They wanted access to good medical marijuana. They want to process, I'm homeless, okay, and I'd love to go get some weed right next door, but I could get fentanyl everywhere, right? I go get, do meth, I don't do that. All I'm saying is, my name's Jeremy Steady, Molly Frye, Dale Schaefer, the original Prop 215 advocates in this. Yeah, I see you smile, bubba. You know what I'm talking about, right? Got a little tear in my eye, because this is true. I come out of goddamn bush to talk to y'all. I excuse my language. Hey, we don't need it near parks. We don't need it near nothing. Hey, you guys, this is an advocate so we can have good medication and a good process. That's all I'm trying to say. I've been here three times now. This is my third time. I'm coming out of my heart. Hey, we don't need that. We don't need near churches. We don't need near parks. I'm homeless. Sounds really good to have it. It's not a thing, you guys. Leave the kids out of it. That's all I got to say. It's up to me.
You give your comments. Alexis, then Carla.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember. My name is Alexis Angulo. I am the founder of Pretty and Posh Cannabis Brand, and I was recently awarded a dispensary license from the 2021 RFQ process. I'm here today in strong support of the proposed amendments to the Title 17 related to cannabis land use. These updates directly reflect the city's ongoing commitment to reducing barriers for core operators and strengthening the equity framework Sacramento has invested years into developing. Allowing administrative permits for a dispensary located outside sensitive use buffers is a critical step forward. It creates a more predictable and efficient plan to becoming operational and aligns the zoning process with the realities of site acquisition, financing, and timeline pressures that equity operators face. This amendment cuts unnecessary delays and ensures that compliant businesses, especially core licenses, can move forward without being stalled by procedural hurdles that were never intended to prevent our success. And as well, I am against any increased buffers between dispensaries. I don't think that that would be fair, as there is already a limit into where we could actually become operational. And so I feel that the 1,000, 1,000-square-foot separation would actually be more harmful than help equity businesses. And that is all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have three more speakers. Carla, then Jacob Schmidt, then Carlos.
Can you guys do that?
Yeah.
Yes, please proceed.
So the handout has, "Your yellow is my black." Proximity to children is a real issue. You can keep calling concerns stigma, but families in Sacramento know better. And dismissing parents as misinformed is not only inaccurate, it's insulting. Youth mental health impacts are not imaginary, and pretending that they, and pretending that they are does not make the risk go away. Putting additional cannabis activity closer to daycare parks, churches, major youth corridors is reckless. Increased visible, visibility normalizes use, normalizes drive, drives experimentation, and experimentation harms kids. We cannot keep pretending that this is not harmless. Armed guards are also a legitimate concern. It is outrageous to downplay the risks. If a business requires guns on-site, then it has no business being placed near children, period. A conditional use permit does not streamline anything. It's a political spin. What it truly does is cut the community out of the process. This isn't greater transparency, it's silencing the neighborhoods that will bear the consequences. Standing against reasonable protections for defenseless teens and toddlers is a shocking position to take as it puts their futures and their families at risk. And if adding simple daycare protections make half the city off-limits, then maybe the ordinance is the problem, not the daycares. Cannabis revenue is not a moral shield. You can talk about tax money all you want, but no amount of revenue will eliminate the risk, the long-term risk. It certainly does not justify weakening safeguards meant to protect children. If you want to reshape Sacramento for the decades to come, then at the very least, have the integrity to priorities, prioritize children, neighbors, and public before cannabis lobby. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jacob, then Carlos will be our final speaker.
Good afternoon. I'm up here for one point. Please do not allow dispensaries to collect, to cluster next to each other. These are putting Sacramento jobs at risk. When dispensaries are placed side by side, you don't create opportunity, you destroy it. Cannibalizing existing small businesses, many of them core and legacy operators who built this industry. We are local employers, paying taxes, providing benefits, and hiring from our neighborhoods. Our margins are very thin. We've been in a downturn for the past four years. Putting another shop next door often pushes predator landlords, directly threatens our revenues, our workers, our viability. We do not allow liquor stores next to liquor stores. City use spacing rules are for a reason, to prevent oversaturation and protect stable local businesses and local neighborhoods. Cannabis deserves the same fairness. If Sacramento wants strong, community-based operators, especially core license holders, we cannot set them up for failure by removing reasonable distance requirements. Please increase it from the 600 that's proposed, or actually was eliminated, to 2,000 feet. Thank you guys for your time. Appreciate it.
And Carlos will be our final speaker on this agenda item.
Good afternoon. My name is Carlos Ramirez. I'm here on behalf of the sanctuary to echo off of what my colleague Jacob just said in that we want to maintain at least a 1,000-foot buffer between dispensaries. One, to prevent detrimental saturation, and two, as a matter of fairness. We think that the 1,000-foot buffer between dispensaries should be treated as a sensitive use and subject to a CUP. One, as a matter of fairness to legacy operators and core participants, we had to go through that, you know, time, time-consuming and expensive CUP process. It wouldn't be fair for new operators to come in and, and basically bypass that. And two, it also gives the community a voice. It lets members come up, speak, and say what they want in their neighborhoods. I suppose an exception could be made if a proposed operator were to show that existing businesses can't meet the demand, but apart from that, I'm strongly suggesting that the 1,000-foot buffer be maintained. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on this agenda item.
Okay. Councilmember Guerra.
Thank you, Mayor. Wasn't intending to go first here, but let's give it a shot here. Let me first start off by thanking the staff and our planning commissioners, and also many in the industry who have been involved, actively involved since the, the inception of, of Sacramento's effort in this. Skargal, I want to thank you. You always spent more time than anybody else. I almost felt like you, you had a, you had a seat here, you know, with your name on it, but, but I, and, and it's been productive, and I, and I appreciate the actual details you've been involved in this. So let me start off by saying that, that I think that engagement by the industry in figuring out what is a, a productive way to move forward, given the voters' interest in this, was, was important. So the, the revised ordinance addressing the issue of non, non-combustion and onsite premises, I think that's an important concept there. I think that's an important piece to include in there. The issues that I think District 6, District 2 has faced is, has been overconcentration, and, and, and it has affected mostly, you know, I disagree with your conjecture, because I will, I know before the study was done, we had issues when overconcentration occurred. We had many other businesses in the industrial area that were squeezed out because of this rush and elevated and created this inflated market. And unfortunately, people lost their jobs because of that, and other businesses relocated to, say, like Rancho Cordova. When the study was done, we had, the council, along with the industry, had created, I think, gotten to a place to normalize industries in the, with the real estate market, because the operators here, the industry folks here, also had landlords who were, were creating these enormous rents and, and, and taking advantage of, of the lack of supply. So, one, I would say the RMX, C1, and C3 addition is positive. I think it's making sure that we expand the, the opportunity so that, that there isn't a, one, two particularly council districts where it's there, but also just creating a little more fairness in the market so that you don't have this, this inflated real estate market that we had before. The, the next issue I think that I'll bring up, I think the, 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 the CUP process, there are things that I think that need to be stepped down. And this is from the experience of watching what gets cited, how oper, how operation goes, and, and then what becomes a real issue. Distribution, manufacturing, testing, those, those are, I think, one, those are, those are processes that have been less complicated with less issues, and I think those do warrant an administrative step-down process. The issue of cultivation, I, I think must be, as was mentioned by the Power and Alliance, must maintain itself in, in the CUP process. And, and that's because you still have major odor issues. And in fact, you, you know, to, again, I'll disagree with this point again, on safety issues. Not necessarily that they, that, that, that one type of crime happens, but I just met with an operator for two hours about the issues that they're facing with their community being, being targeted, and part of it has to be with the early design and the issues that the city have. And so I think the CUP process addresses that, and the fact that they've had folks that are followed from work, that have been, that where the, the facility was designed in a way through, through where, where they could track what's happening inside, and people fall victim to that. So I do think that the CUP process helps in, in addressing that, because it gets more eyes on the project. It makes it a better project. I agree that, with folks that have said that, you know, we have to have parity on this, because I think the CUP process in itself has created better projects. And the, to the point about a recommendation here that if we go through the administrative process, then there isn't a council call-up provision. Well, that's a problem in itself as well. What you're saying is that the, the staff is recommending that essentially if there's an administrative process and there's a council member who has an issue with a, with a project and sees that maybe there, there were gaps in, in the outreach or the communication, that then the council would not have an opportunity to weigh in. And, and particularly for cultivation, I think that, that, that's a, that's a significant issue. The, let me move on here to, so the, the cultivation, no call-up provision. I, I do think that there are other things that we, that can't be addressed here, but that should be addressed. The issue of the multi-tax situation when you have a vertical integration, and many of the operators have tried to do cultivation with manufacturing to address quality and to make sure that they're, they're getting products that maybe they don't want pesticides or any particular things that give them a better or safer product. I, I think that the, the, the situation that, that we're trying to address is the cost impact to operators, and, and if, and if that's the issue, what we're doing is reducing the, the, the CUP process to reduce the cost issue, when the cost issue maybe is in, is in the taxation of the vertical integrated process. And, and that must be, I think, looked at instead of reducing the, the safeguards that come with the regulatory process. So in my opinion, I think that shouldn't be reviewed. And while I don't agree with reducing the number, but if you're the operator that manages a vertical integration process, maybe the taxation point is only at one point there. So I think that should be something to be explored. You know, in earlier recommendations had a number of, of places like, you know, museums and other, you know, locations in there. I, I do think that, that putting too much on that list reduce, goes counter to what we tried to do, which, which is expand the, of the number of places so you don't have clustering. So I think reducing those number, the, those, those locations is okay. I still, I still have a lot of heartburn with childcare centers, because our current K through 12 facilities now accept TK. Those are four-year-olds. That's the same thing as a childcare center. So I, I do believe that if the council moves forward with this, that childcare facilities, let's put it that way, childcare facilities should be, centers should be explicitly written into. It is hard to determine if there's an in-home care person, and while I empathize and understand that Child Action works with a lot of in-home care facilities, that could be anybody's home, and that would be difficult to regulate as well. But specifically for centers, that, I think that needs to be back into the, the CUP process, in, in my opinion here. The, I do want to thank, you know, our, the, the operator here from Crystal Nugs for also being so engaged in this process and figuring out how does the city maneuver to, to be, one, a good operator, a fair operator, and then also address the issue of what happens when a sensitive use moves in. And I, I agree with the first-in, first-in-time provision. I think that's, that is a sense of, we've had this kind of policy of not moving the goalpost in the past. You know, it's like when, when someone has invested a lot of time in their project and also then, and that we've allowed folks to, to continue through that process, because this isn't a overnight process. Everybody knows who's gone through this process. It's, it's not even a one-month or a two-month process. This is a significant investment in time and money, so I do think that whatever the council passes and moving forward must maintain the first-in-time provision. And then future buyers need to do their analysis of, of who their neighbors are. Again, the, that's why we have the CUP process, to make sure that neighbors and everyone is aware of that. And if, and if we're removing that and saying it's going to be an administrative process, and with all due respect, you know, even an administrative hearing when you have to go to Richards Boulevard is, is not a, a true communicated, communicated process. I'll agree with, with the Power and Alliance that we have a, a general problem with the cost of the overall CUP process, whether you're opening up a bakery or, you know, a restaurant or one of these, the, the CUP process is onerous. So I think a deeper focus on how do we benefit the CUP, improve the CUP process to reduce the cost and the time. I think that, I think deserves more exploration there. So, and then I, I also want to, I think, say that, that there are, there, when it comes to consumption lounges, I think there are very two clear distinctions between smoking consumption lounges, and that's why we made two types. And I still, I think that the, the city should not be in, in, in the realm of, of encouraging, you know, facilities and locations where people smoke, not when there's so many different ways of consuming the, the product. That's why we've, we've done issues of addressing flavored tobaccos. We've done issues of addressing menthol and others. But that's not for, for this item. That's, that's been discussed already. That's already been deliberated here. I'm on the minority end of that decision. But I do believe that if the council moves forward, these are clear things that I think we need to, ensures that cultivation continues to be in the CUP process. There needs to be a call-up provision available to the council in every, at the, at every, in every category, not through the entire process, but at least at, at, at the category and category. And then, and I agree with, finally, with the dispensary-to-dispensary buffer zone. The, the, 1,000 feet is two blocks away. Maybe, maybe that's too much. I don't, I don't, I don't want to say, you know, whether it's 600 or 1,000, but I do think that there is a, a point to be made about, you know, whether a, an existing legacy business that went through the CUP process and then all of a sudden, an administrative process comes in. There is a question of fairness now on that point. So I'll say, I'll stop there, Mayor, and, and say, those are my comments on this. I'm not ready to entertain or push a motion, but I do think that, that if the council moves forward, that we need to, to address some of those issues. And I know this has been an evolu, an evolution in process, like we were revising what we tried in the first place. And so I'm willing to continue to work with those, those folk, the, those industry partners here, because a large, a large number of them are in District 6, and I've worked with many of them through the, the point of their first start of... And I've worked with many of them through the, the point of their first start of, I think I'm going to purchase this property or lease this property and, and what should happen. And, uh, whether I agreed with their location or not, I think that we've been able to, uh, move through this, uh, process in a different way. So let me stop there, Mayor, and, uh, looking forward to hearing my colleagues on this conversation.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, let me, uh, let me begin by, uh, echoing, uh, the comments of, of my colleague, the, uh, Mayor Pro Tem with respect to, to, thanks to, to the staff and, um, to the public, uh, to, um, the planning commission members, to all those who, who've, uh, been deeply engaged with this over an extended, um, period of time. I'm, I'm sure notwithstanding differences of point of view. Probably everyone would like this to conclude, then perhaps everyone could agree on that, but I, I'm not so sure, um, that, at least for my part, we're there yet. I, I do want to ask a couple of questions and, uh, let me, let me, the first question really, uh, uh, picks up on the, on the final point that Mayor Pro Tem was, was making with respect to fairness. We heard testimony that, that, um, this, uh, really is unfair to those who have been, uh, previously, um, uh, certificated, approved, and, uh, changing the standards now is, is, is in fact, uh, something that operates to the, to their, their, their detriment, uh, unjustly. And I just wonder if there's some comment on that that the staff would like to make? How, how do you perceive that?
So if I could, um, maybe ask a clarifying question, there's a few different ways we've heard this comment, um, be surfaced in engagement phase and, and hearings in general. From the business owner's perspective, there has been a comment about fairness as it pertains to the cost and time that was incurred to become lawful. And I think you could use an analogy of, of gaining any type of government benefit or having to pay a substantial cost, where if you make it less of a burden from others, for others in the future, does that make it right to make a regulatory change? And I will defer to your judgment on whether using the evidence, uh, that has guided us to produce an ordinance that we thought appropriately were just, addressed, the legislative purpose of a permit that's a conditional use permit, is there are special or unique problems that this business causes? The evidence doesn't tell us that. And so we've used that evidence to reflect on the permit process and the associated time and costs that's related to it. And that's where our recommendation is attempting to more, um, on a balanced way, uh, address competing viewpoints for where these should be located in proximity to other uses. And what is, what is the permit type that we should use to balance those competing demands? So we feel, um, the administrative permit is an appropriate remedy, um, that will benefit other business owners of the future, and it may in fact benefit existing business owners if they wish to relocate or expand.
So, uh, it, it sounds as, as if improving the process from your, your point of view may, may have some, uh, consequences that you, you might not prefer necessarily in a perfect world, but maybe unavoidable.
Cool. I think if you, if you received a, a commission level conditional use permit, um, and you're a successful business today, that's great. Is that the test for these regulations for what you would deem appropriate for citing future locations? I wouldn't say the cost or barrier, the, the barrier to entry is the measure for what's appropriate in staff's view, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does. I, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I think it's, it, it remains a considera- a consideration that's very hard to address. Uh, uh, perhaps that's what we can agree on. I wanted to, to also ask about, um, whether or not, since we heard testimony both about buffers for, for churches and for daycare, uh, locations, whether you had, and it's in the, was in the planning commission recommendation, obviously, um, whether you had mapped those? I didn't, I did not see maps, but did I miss them? That, that mapped the, what it would look like if you included those buffers, buffers from those uses?
So we did include that in the September staff report. It was presented, um, to show you what the commission's recommendation would mean. I could, I could characterize those for you if it's helpful, um, generally?
Sure.
Okay. So to add churches to the list of sensitive, to, to keep it on this list of sensitive uses, it is, in terms of geography, it is the top sensitive use. So meaning that it, they are prevalent throughout the entire city and that having that as a sensitive use is one of the reasons today, we look at current acreage that's zoned for cannabis dispensaries, 92% of that land is within a sensitive use buffer. So every sensitive use stacks up to essentially encumber almost all property as being within a buffer today. Now, to us, that's, that's meaning that a dispensary is more than likely going to go to commission level based on the zoning in that sensitive use buffer.
So, so let me see if, does it work the other way around? In other, in other words, if you included childcare locations and, and churches, you wouldn't expand that, that area significantly that, that, uh, would require a buffer? If I understood, if I understood you correctly, you said because of, because of the stacking effect of, of uses, that 92% of, of the area of the, of the city would require some sort of buffer? And, and, and so that, that impliedly would include churches and, and daycare locations. Does it, does it work the other way around?
Yeah. So, yeah.
But that, that's not the churches in, is it?
That's okay. Didn't want to interrupt. So the difference between the staff and the commission recommendation is that the commission's recommendation would increase the land that's zoned for cannabis businesses by 25% as being within a buffer. So more property requi- within a buffer of a sensitive use.
Okay. Okay. Um, all right. And then in terms of the, the administrative process, then the administrative process would come with notice, but no hearing. And, uh, assuming the, uh, prerequisites were satisfied, then it, obviously the permit would be issued administratively.
Correct.
Um, I just, as a small side, sidebar here, we were talking this morning about notices when we were talking about 10 units to a, a parcel of the new legislation. And the comment, the comment was, well, if we gave notice there, we'd have to give notice in every, every planning application, and that would be, that would be cost prohibitive. But here we are requiring a notice. So what's the distinction?
Oh, there's a very simple distinction that the body of law that we were talking about this morning concerns residential land uses.
Uh-huh.
Commercial land uses are not subject to the body of law that I was, that was referred to earlier.
I see.
Not, not to say that there wouldn't be a cost, but...
Yeah.
That, yeah.
Okay. So you're saying because, because it's non-residential, it doesn't, it, it doesn't, um, have the same, uh, requirement?
Correct. That's why we have a, a unique notice requirement for cannabis business, uh, the administrative permit provision in this ordinance.
Okay. Um, I'm, I'm not going to, uh, uh, Councilmember Gata covered a number of the other issues, so I'm not going to retread, retread those. Uh, I would say that I, I have, um, thought all along that, uh, something that parallels the, uh, PCN process for alcohol sales makes, makes sense with, in, in concept with respect to, to cannabis, um, because of the restrictions, uh, on, uh, to whom it can be, can be sold or, or, uh, who can consume, um, because of the sensitivity of the kind of, kind of use from a community standpoint. And so we require, can do, as, in effect, we require conditional use permits for alcohol sales. I, 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 I'm still trying to, to parse why that, that shouldn't apply equally to, to this. And I, I suppose the argument is, well, we did this study and we don't see these kinds of adverse effects that people had worried about, and so we can, we can reduce the level of, of, uh, of scrutiny. Um, I'm not sure that, that that's shared, at least, uh, in certain parts of the, the community, and particularly in the parts of the city that I represent. So, um, just conceptually, the commu- the, uh, conditional land use permit makes sense to me. You, you can always look at process improvements, as you were referring to, uh, Councilmember Gata, with respect to the, to, to how it, how it is administered, what it costs, the time it takes, those kinds of things. But personally, I would still favor that. If, if we're proceeding, uh, with essentially what's been presented as a staff recommendation, then I would certainly support, uh, enlarging the, the buffer zones to encourage, essentially the, the, um, planning commission, uh, recommendation in that, in that regard. So let me, let me leave it there for the, for the moment, uh, other than to say, uh, as one, I'm not ready to support the staff recommendation at this juncture, but I think it, it's getting closer. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and, and thank you to the staff and everyone who came out today, um, with, you know, various points of view. I know this has been a topic of discussion for, uh, years at this point in time, um, so just want to really appreciate you for being steadfast and, and working with stakeholders, working with the community. Uh, I think it's important to note that, that in processes like this, nobody gets everything that they want. Um, that's how it always works. Um, and that's, you know, maybe a good thing and a bad thing, but it is our democratic process. Um, but, but I do know that there has been input taken, um, from all across the spectrum for a very long time. Uh, before I was in this position, when I was on the other side of this position, um, in, in the audience, uh, we know how, how hard the staff work to, to make sure that all, everyone is heard, that everyone's point of view is taken into account. Um, and also that there have been so many iterations of this that have included everything from community input, business input, um, to the input of the Planning and Design Commission, to the input of Law and Legislation Committee, and now here. Uh, and so it may not look exactly like every person wants, and what's, what's the old adage? If no one's happy, that's probably a good thing. Um, and so, you know, with that, I know I've made many, many comments on this over, over the years, um, so I won't belabor it. I think people know where I stand. Um, and with that, I stand with the staff recommendation. I think it's the right one, um, because it is not what everyone wants, but because it is what everybody, all that input has taken into account. And so with that, I'm going to, um, make a motion to move the staff, staff recommendation.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Councilmember Pluckebon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be supporting the motion and, and look forward to, uh, you know, further moving the cannabis industry away from prohibition, treating it more and more like alcohol, tobacco. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions. Thank you for everybody. Um, a couple items I want to put a pin in that will probably come to lawn ledge, but I think we need to continue the conversation that have come up is taxes, because as it was laid out in the 2022 report, um, that was given to council back then, it looked at what different cities do. And I think that's something we should, we started that conversation, got waylaid. I think it's something we should, we should look at. Um, and then it's been called up, but I think it might have been done by Councilmember Valens Wayla before she left, of restrictions on smoke shops and CBD especially. There is like some CBD and extra, like, extract that kids can overdose on, but they can go get to a smoke shop and can legally buy, that I think we need to look at, and that's been asked within the industry. So two things, probably parking lot, not today, but I think we should follow up on. Um, I, I do think when, um, whatever passes, I think there should be, if it is administrative approval of something, I think there should be a provision that allows a council member to call it up. And, and I want to just preface it by say that I think staff, you guys do an amazing job, but you're not the council member and you weren't elected, and there may be some things you just don't know. So, um, this is something I would like the makers of the motion just to think about as we listen to our other colleagues, that I think if we do that, council members should be given deference to a certain extent on something that they may not know, um, and should be taken into consideration. Um, I do agree with that we should give, um, I know people say this is the wrong term to use. I'm sorry, I'm an attorney. Grandfather, everybody in, especially if they've gone through the CUP process and a sensitive use moves in next to them, I don't want to see them having to go through any CUP, any other process. I want to make that very clear. Um, one of the things, um, maybe you can help me clarify, I'm not sure I saw, but council direction was to allow, uh, for like tea lounges or just edible lounges, which are different from smoke shops, and I did not see where that was or how that was included.
Thank you, Councilmember. You, you wouldn't see it in this ordinance because it is regulated in Title V of the city code, uh, under our business operating permits for cannabis generally. The consumption lounge topic defines two categories of business, type one and type two. So type one is non-smoking, everything that's non-smoking, and type two is everything plus smoking.
Okay.
So we're, we're not in Title 17 getting into that regulatory, regulatory space, we're letting Title V do its work.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, um, that was, was clear. And then, um, uh, what was the reason for, um, eliminating the dispensary-to-dispensary buffer?
Thank you for asking the question. There are a couple of purposes that, so it's in the code today to have a 600-foot buffer other, a dispensary-to-dispensary. What, overall, a theme that we're attempting to convey through this analysis and our recommendation is to reassess, um, from a business perspective, what are, what are the costs of doing business? And in looking at the industry itself, in what ways is it truly needing special or different regulations? In that sense, we're looking at a retail establishment for a dispensary. We do not regulate other retail establishments in this manner for competition purposes. That is not a zoning topic that is regulated today for a coffee shop or a grocery store or any other retail business. So that's one reason. Another reason that you could perceive that regulation being enacted, although the, the record doesn't clearly describe it, is for, um, is for concentration purposes generally. Now, uh, dispensaries are limited in number citywide by a finite number. It's codified in, by Title V, so it's 43 total in the city. That's the max, the cap. That's, that's one way that concentration is addressed. Another indirect mechanism could be what you're hearing in, uh, from business owners is having a little bit of space, which would indirectly affect real estate transactions and locations. So those are some of our thoughts.
So I hear you. Um, are, from liquor store to liquor store, is that regulated in zoning and buffers?
By, by, through the PCN process, many of our, many of our census tracts, so we're getting into an overlap similar to cannabis of state and local law. So there are two bodies of law that are operating here locally. Uh, liquor stores or off-sale establishments are not regulated by census tract, they're regulated by zoning district.
Okay.
So whether or not there is one next door is irrelevant. It simply is that business allowed in that zoning district? If it's a liquor store, it needs a conditional use permit. Separately, and in, in a similar parallel process, there's a public convenience and necessity finding that is likely required when the census tract is over-concentrated, which is a similar but different question. So that, the police department administers a PCN process to make that finding or not.
Okay. So you said a terminology, I, I want you to say again, uh, necessity? What was with that or over-concentrate? It's a...
Yeah. Um, so, um, alcohol law in, in the state sense uses a public convenience and necessity finding process. So a local government, before the state will issue a license, so a state license, if that census tract is over-concentrated, it will require the prospective business owner to seek approval from the local government of a public convenience and necessity. So it's kind of a funny term, but we, uh, you need to, it's, it's legal jargon to say that it is appropriate for this, it is in the public's interest to have this liquor business be here, even though it's over-concentrated.
So public convenience and necessity. So I mean, I think that, that almost opens up another can of worms because I think we regulate can... can of worms, because I think we regulate cannabis different than we regulate alcohol, yet they have the same restrictions, and why do we treat them as different instead of the same? So it then begs the question of why, if the state does look at a potential buffer and over-concentration, not that we would have that necessarily with dispensaries, but I believe the council also authorized an additional 20, potentially, to dispensaries to come online, why wouldn't we keep a potential buffer that maybe has to go through the CUP that allows for the public input to say whether there is an over-concentration or not?
Is there, is there a question?
Well, why wouldn't we? Why wouldn't we keep it the same?
I think...
Why wouldn't we treat cannabis like alcohol?
They are, from a state regulatory perspective, subject to very different requirements.
Which I totally get that. I get the law treats them as differently, but why can't the city of Sacramento look at them as this is kind of like a policy conversation? Why don't we regulate them the same way? While state does it differently, why don't we look at them as a policy-wise? Because I hear you saying we don't regulate coffee shops. Well, cannabis, you know, and liquor are not equal to coffee shops. But cannabis and liquor can be equal to themselves, even if so, liquor is more dangerous. So, you know, I think it is important for us to potentially, because this is a policy conversation, and we have authorized more dispensaries, plus these dispensaries that just, that have their CUPs went through an entire process that now we are streamlining it to make it easier, which may shut down existing businesses. So it is, it is a balance of how we look at things. And so I'm, I'm asking my colleagues, why wouldn't we keep a potential buffer between dispensaries, but allow it to do a CUP? Because we would do the same for alcohol. So that is something to think about of if we're having this policy conversation, and I get making things easier, but it's also respecting small businesses that are in place. And when we talk about, we just passed having economic development and economic drivers as, as a key thing for the city of Sacramento, this brings in a fair amount of tax-based dollars. Why would we do things that would harm existing businesses that are bringing in millions of dollars of taxpayer money and did all the hard work to pave the way? So I hope that is something considered. I also asked you, if you look at page 288 in your report, wouldn't mind if you pulled that up, because I have a couple of questions on page 288 of the 454-page document. So this is a map that was used in the 2022 report, kind of looking at what, what works and what doesn't work in the city of Sacramento. What you'd be looking at if you were on page 288 of the 454 council report that I clicked on, is figure 22 for the city of Sacramento cannabis buffer and available land. It's black and white. So I'm, am I correct in saying that when it looks at the city of Sacramento cannabis buffer and available land from this report from 2022, for parks, it has a 600-foot buffer, and those are in black, right? Can you say what it tells me about what, what the buffer is for schools?
So, yeah, what I'm seeing is the report produced by EPS Economic Planning Systems. So the consultants that produce the cannabis study, the legend identifies 1,000-foot for schools as a buffer, which is not our regulatory buffer in Title 17 for zoning purposes. I couldn't speak to why the 1,000-foot was put there.
Could you go up to page 287 and, and read the last paragraph and, and explain that
There's a lot of information in the paragraph. I want to make sure I understand your question. It's speaking to different zoning districts and buffer distances for uses.
It says in figure 22, which shows the zoning districts where cannabis uses are permitted and where there are restrictions. The restrictions on areas around schools is increased to 1,000 feet to account for the distance from the center of the school to the edge of school grounds from where the 600 regulatory buffer is measured. And so I'm wanting you to tease that out. So in your maps that you're showing, where is the 600-foot buffer measured? Is it measured from the beginning of this, at the center of the school or the school boundaries?
School boundaries.
School boundaries. So why does this report use 1,000 feet? Because I've been asking questions that there had been reports in the city of Sacramento that there had been a 1,000-foot buffer, and this is actually where it came from. So I'm wanting staff to, to understand and explain that, because I've been asking this question for a while.
The report wasn't produced under our supervision. I couldn't speak to why it specifically says that. It was produced by, by our OCM staff.
Um, okay.
So I don't, I don't understand the rationale behind it, to be, to be frank.
But you understand why people would be confused that this report went public? People have been reading it. They've been saying that there should be a 1,000-foot buffer with schools. Again, I know state law is 600 feet. One of the questions I did ask you, because it was, could we expand the buffer to 1,000 feet for all schools? And I understand when I was in the minority, but I'd like our council members to consider it this way. You know, our, our daycares, the kids are not going out and buying it. Elementary school, for the most part, they're not. But we got high school kids. And the gentleman that came up is correct. High school kids aren't going to go into the dispensary, but they know how to get adults to go get things for them. And 1,000-feet buffer from high schools is basically three and a third football fields. It really is just a fifth of a mile, which makes it just a little bit more inconvenient. I did ask you to analyze that. If we did amend the staff recommendation, that say for high schools, K-12, be it charter, churches, whatever registered school and where it's run, how much land, available land, would it remove from the city as available for potential cannabis items and dispensaries?
Yeah, thank you for the question. We did analyze it and produced a map. What, what we're seeing, if high, any, any school that goes up to grade 12 were included, it would result in a 29-acre decrease from the staff recommendation. So it's a very modest 1% decrease in area. So I would say it's a very minor change in terms of available acreage.
So I would hope that the makers of the motions would consider, because we did have requests, and the requests that we hear from our youth and our high schoolers, that we keep the 600-foot buffer of K-12, but specifically for schools that go up into high school, we make it 1,000-foot buffer that they mandatorily can't, can't have a dispensary within 1,000 feet of a high school. And I heard you correct, that only just adds an additional 29 acres or less than 1% of the available land on as restricted. If the makers of the motions would, would consider that.
I'm happy to respond. So this is, I thought a lot about this, and this is a challenge that I'm having with the, a lot of this in general, is that there is actually no, no research that shows that if it's within 600 feet or 1,000 feet or 1,200 feet, that you're going to see more or less students going into a dispensary. In fact, we are hearing, and all the research shows, and our own Nexus study shows, that they are not going into dispensaries. In fact, what we see often is that students, when they are accessing cannabis, they're getting it on the illicit market, which is, in my opinion, where we should be channeling our energy, not the legal companies that are trying to do the right thing, that have security, that have protocols, that are checking IDs and so on. And so I just, I'm struggling with adding an additional layer when it's not clear to me what that's going to get us. And so I would prefer to keep the motion with the staff recommendation, because I know that they put a lot of work and time and energy into this, and I believe that it's the right path. So that's where I'm at.
And, and I, and I really appreciate that, and I think that's, you know, the dialogue that's hard that we got to have now, because I actually agree with you. It's not the dispensary itself, but it's the location of the dispensary and having adults go in and the proximity to high schools. They use adults. They use others that are going in and getting it, because I talked to our high school kids. And, and they are having other adults, when it's convenient, go in and get this stuff for them. And so making it and moving it a little bit further away, you know, is something that my community is asking for. I do want to streamline, but looking out for our youth, and we've also heard a lot from our youth, of this is just a small request of extending it a little bit further, that I hope that a certain amount of this is trying to find some, some common ground of, of what we hear, but also understanding, because it's not our dispensary, what's inside and how they're running it, it's the location that, that does cause some, some issue.
I guess I'm, just, not to belabor this, but it would be really interesting to see for me if we had any data from law enforcement or anywhere else to show that that's actually the case, that there are students that are using adults within a certain distance of schools, and we're seeing a higher, you know, likelihood of that within a distance of schools. I just, I'm cautious to not, you know, do something in search of a problem that we don't even know exists. You know, I hear you say that you've, you've talked to students that have said that that's the case, so I believe that maybe it is happening, but I just, I would love to see the information on that personally.
And I wish there was information, but we also know, having over 100 cops down, this is not part of what they're doing, and there, there isn't. But, you know, I'm also using my 20 years of having been a school board member and working with students in areas of, of something to be considered.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to stop the, the back and forth. We have a motion and a second. We have multiple issues to, here still tonight. We have a closed session, and we apparently have a 5 o'clock council meeting. People are already lined up for us, so...
So, I'm sorry, Mayor, are you interrupting me in the questions that I'm asking?
Are you done with your question?
No. No, but I was appreciating the, the dialogue that I was having with...
Okay, we're going to cease the dialogue between your councilmen, but if you have more staff questions, please continue.
The second one that I did ask for is potentially on all items that are admin, a council call-up provision.
So I'd like to ask our city attorney, if I could, to share with us the challenges with that.
Sure. So an admin permit is a ministerial permit under the law, and so when the reviewer is taking a look at that, they're just checking boxes to see, does, does the project meet these requirements? And so the admin permit we have, there is an opportunity for reconsideration by the reviewing director, whether it's the planning director or the zoning administrator. In other words, if staff makes a mistake in checking those standards initially, there's an opportunity to make sure it's done correctly under reconsideration. But to have a call-up on an admin permit to council, council's hands would be tied in terms of, there's no discretion in that process. It would just be, is it within X feet of a sensitive use? Council would not have the opportunity to shape the project in any way. So if that was important, the vehicle to do that would be a CUP.
Okay. So I guess that's for listening to my other colleagues who have that and had requested a call-up that it would look like a CUP. Those are all my questions at this time.
For the next speaker?
Yes, councilmember Gara.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I mean, there's, there's really two things that, that still stand out here. And one of them, again, goes to, if, if you're going to include a kindergarten school, then you should be including childcare facilities. I don't necessarily agree with so much the churches. Industrial locations have a lot of churches. You know, I think that the, they're next to places like even Procter &amp; Gamble and others that, that do other locations, and churches can choose to locate there. But the, that brings up to the second point. And the second point is the call-up provision. And, and I really can't support any staff recommendation that removes the call-up provision, even if, if it's, you know, I appreciate the staff's work, but if this, if the council were to approve the item today without a call-up provision, essentially what they're instituting is that District 6 and District 2, which is the only place where the majority of the M1 provisions, M1 zoning is at, would have the inability to, to respond to their issues. Because the rest of the city, the rest of the council districts, which would be using, you know, either dispensary, delivery or dispensaries, would have that provision, but really where cultivation and the majority of that work happens is at, is in District 2 and District 6. So I think instituting and ensuring that the call-up provision is in, in, in every option is important. I think it's an important piece of the council function. And it's a de novo situation, so it allows us to, to hear everything from, from, you know, from the beginning and have the appropriate amount of time. So I'll leave it to that, and I think that the, having the council call-up provision for everything is, is critical, and at the very least, adding the childcare centers.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to keep this short. I just want to thank all of the folks who came to speak today in support of staff's recommendation or in opposition. I think we're doing our best to really thread the line and figure out how we could support our local businesses, at the same time address any unintended consequences as well. And so I would be supportive of this if we actually had a call-up provision for all usage. I want, I want the ability as a council member to hear directly from my constituent if there are concerns, so that I could work through with my community. I think that's really important. If we had a call-up provision just for all usage, I would, I would be in support of this. And so just asking the motion, the motion around the table to see if she would be interested in just adding that call-up provision, and I would support the motion if, if that's possible. Just because as councilwoman, I just want the ability to be able to have, if community has had concern, they could, the council member could, could, you know, do, do the call-up provision. I just think that's important as the local elected for neighborhoods that we represent. So just wanted to make that ask to see if that's possible, and if, if it is, then, you know, I would vote to support it.
Okay. Thank you. We have some suggestions for potential, but right now on the floor, we have a motion and a second on staff recommendation. No further queued up. Please call the roll.
And Councilmember Maple, may I confirm that you did close the public hearing when you made the motion?
Hi.
Thank you. So this is roll call for the staff recommendation. Councilmember Kaplan?
No.
Councilmember Dickinson?
No.
Vice Mayor Talamontes?
No.
Councilmember Pluckebom?
Yes.
Councilmember Maple?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gara?
No.
Councilmember Jennings?
No.
Councilmember Vang?
No.
So Mayor, your motion fails.
Well, you can call me.
Oh, pardon me, Mayor McCarty?
Aye.
Yes. Thank you. You only got one vote still. I apologize. The motion continues to fail.
Mayor, can I, can I make that same motion, but with the amendment to allow the call-up provision?
Yeah, we have a motion, but let's make the, make the first motion, a chance to engage here.
No, that's okay. No, and I really appreciate it. I know you wanted the opportunity, the mayor and I, to have it on the staff recommendation, because staff work so hard on this. But I hear my concerns from my colleagues. I don't know if it addresses Councilmember Kaplan's concerns or Councilmember Dickinson. But doing staff recommendation with the addition of call-ups for all the license types would be my motion.
So the same thing that you just said, right, Vang?
You didn't need clarity. I think, I would second that.
So we have a motion and a second on the, with the call-up.
There's it. Yeah, Dickinson has it.
Where Dickinson?
I, I just have a question of clarification. Number one, what does the call-up provision apply to? And number two, what is the discretion of the council if, if a matter is called up?
Well, I'm happy to do it from my perspective. So for the call-up provision would be for all the, all the various license types, because I heard concerns from cultivation to retail distances from schools. And so that would allow a council member to be able, so if an application comes through and they have a concern, to be able to call it up to the city council for a vote and discussion.
Or for, for any aspect of it?
Right.
Yeah.
For all the license types. Is that fair?
Yeah, I'd like, thank you, Courtney, if you could.
Sure. So right now...
Sure. So right now, the ordinance has a call-up provision for all conditional use permits. There's not one for admin permits, but those are subject to reconsideration under our normal rules, meaning the reviewing director will double-check that staff has done everything correctly. So theoretically, you could have a call-up on those admin permits to counsel, but councils, there's no discretion. You would just be reviewing the, does it check the box within 600 feet, which I believe is why staff did not initially include that, because it's just a ministerial check the box.
Yeah, and thank you for that. That's, I asked the question because I wanted to be sure about that. And so I appreciate the effort to find a pathway here. But then the council's action in a call-up setting is simply to make a judgment about whether the facts are accurate or not with respect to the application. And that doesn't quite get there for me personally.
Yes, admin permits subject to reconsideration, and conditional use permits are subject to call-up.
Okay. So we have, yes, done with your questioning, Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Kaplan.
Just clarification, what I've heard. So as we're trying to address everybody, and I'm trying to get to a yes, what I'm hearing is that if we keep admin, in reality, the call-up provision doesn't give council members a discretion, but the CUP process does. So it would really be eliminating admin and having everything CUP. If we wanted to have discretion and council, like, ability to change things.
Correct. And may I ask one more comment? If someone were to move staff recommendation, I just want to confirm that also includes the amendments that Kevin put up in his PowerPoint.
Correct.
So I think that's where I almost would want to see that black and white thing up again of what admin was and what Planning and Design Commission was. If you can pull that up, Madam Clerk, because I think that's what permit type is admin, is what we're saying. We want all of those to go to CUP. Or is it, like, certain ones? Are we cool to leave public notice and ministerial review on there and only change over all types but lounges and the mandatory 6-foot-100 buffer to PUC? Or CUP, sorry? Because that's really, because if we leave those on admin, we have no ability to change the checkbox if we do a call-up. But if we move all types but lounges to CUP and mandatory 600-foot buffer to CUP, we still have the provision to call it up and have discretionary, where we might want to leave the other ones. So if you go back to the black and white, what it said, what was admin versus what was CUP, I think what might address what Eric and Mai and I are talking about is the first two items, which were under admin review, which were all types but lounges. Move that from admin to CUP, and the 600-foot buffer from admin to CUP. And then that would allow the council call-up and discretion versus if we just added call-up for admins, what I'm hearing legal councils say, is if we leave them under admin, we only have discretion on checkboxes, no discretion on our knowledge as council members and our ability to represent our community.
So related to CUP, we would be changing nothing. The effort to change the CUP process for cannabis, if we were to do that, would result in no changes to CUPs, because CUPs are currently required now for everything anyway. So are you willing to consider the alternative?
So we have a motion on the floor.
Well, it's clear that that is not something that's going to be widely supported, and so I don't see the point in doing a whole nother vote on this, especially when we can't do the call-up provision with admins. But the whole point of a lot of this conversation was around trying to streamline the process away from the CUPs, because the CUPs are so onerous and costly to business owners. And so at this point, you know, I'm willing to take my motion off the table, either open it up to others, or perhaps we can continue this, or just let the current vote stand.
Yeah. I would, yeah, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, can I? So I think that we can all get to a yes if the city attorney's office can figure out how to make it so that we can do some kind of CUP process, do some kind of process where if there's a large concern in the community with a business coming in, the community has a say to be able to say, hey, this isn't the right place, maybe pick, look at another location, and us as council members having that discretion. So I feel like we're on hour two of discussing this item, and there's a general consensus, but not fully. And I think taking it back to your office and the experts to figure out how we can get to what we want to achieve here today, I think can eventually lead to...
Yes, I think I'm going to take that recommendation and cease the discussion. The motion's been withdrawn. This item will be continued for further deliberation. Next item, Madam Clerk.
So Mayor, do we want to continue this to a date certain?
No date cert.
A date certain. So we're going to continue the item?
Indefinitely.
And so you're making that motion to continue the item?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No zillions or abstentions, hearing none. Next item.
Okay. We now move to item number 37, which is adoption of the outcomes of the City Council Priority and Goal Setting Workshop on September 30th, 2025.
Good afternoon. I'm pleased to be here today as your interim city manager. Today, I'm recommending adoption of the outcomes from the September 30 Council Offsite Priority and Goal Setting Workshop. It's been a while since our September 30th workshop, so I wanted to just spend a very brief moment outlining what we accomplished that day. The agenda for the day was organized around teamwork and governance, council visioning together, shared district interests, setting a citywide path forward, and ending with consensus on priorities. For me, the day felt really different, in that there was a consistent and full participation by everyone with a lot fewer distractions than would normally have on a meeting at the dais like this. And I want to thank you all for your time, attention, and commitment to this process. The key outcomes for that day included consensus on top three priorities, which we'll talk about in a minute, council input about success measures and some elements to be included in the city manager's work plan, council support with the concept of creating strategic goals, which we've brought for you here today, and strengthened teamwork within the council and executive staff. I wanted to share this slide, because I think it encapsulates what you as a team collectively feel about what is true today. We have a strong sense of pride. We value open space, have strong neighborhoods, to name a few, and what you hope for in the future, like more investment in the city, people not living on the streets, strengthening our core services, greater employment opportunities, and livable neighborhoods. We're here today, as we promised on the 30th, to formally adopt council's priorities and share our next steps. Taking what was heard from council, along with our facilitators' individual interviews with each of you prior to the offsite, we provided a preliminary list of priorities to start with, including budget and fiscal health, climate change, economic development, equity, homelessness, housing, infrastructure, public safety, and transportation and mobility. The value of setting a few top priorities is to name what will be our key focus of attention over the coming year. This graphic demonstrates how the three priorities, economic development, homelessness, and public safety, are interrelated, and with these priorities in mind, council discussed and brainstormed measures of success, which will ultimately help staff to track and monitor a work plan specific to managing the work and updating council on priority area projects and programs with milestones and measures. And just so you know, we're already working with our incoming city manager as we start to create a detailed work plan around these priorities that will be updated and reported on to council regularly. However, even with our priorities, as a key step, we still lack the roadmap for the entire organization. For the day-to-day programs and services remain a substantial portion of what our residents expect and our employees are engaged in. With that, this is where we started to discuss broad strategic goals, which are intended to be statements of desired outcomes. These concepts were fully supported by council with direction to me and the staff to work to finalize and define. So we took what we heard at the offsite, met as a team, and reworked them to better define the suggested strategic goals, which you have here in front of you. These three goals provide a broader framework for all city programs and services within which we are focusing on council's priorities. I think all city departments and employees will be able to relate to at least one of these strategic goals. And finally, we took, as we refined our work, we took one of the facilitator's suggested goals, because to us, it resonated more as a set of foundational principles. These principles represent what we believe in and overlay every aspect of how we conduct ourselves: equitable investment, fiscal sustainability, accountability, and good governance. With the work we did and considering all we heard at the offsite on September 30th, we believe we've developed strategic goals and foundational principles that reflect a sound framework for a resilient Sacramento. With that, I ask for a motion adopting the three council-identified priorities from the council offsite, economic development, public safety, and homelessness, and the supporting foundational principles and strategic goals. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? No, I know, seriously, we spent two hours talking about changing our cannabis licensing policies and 30 seconds on this. And, you know, this is the future of Sacramento, public safety, economic development, quality of life issues. So we want to make sure we follow through on this and everything we do. So thank you.
Mayor, I just have a quick comment. Thank you, interim city manager, for that update. I really appreciate it. Last time we did priority setting, the item actually never came back for a formal vote, so I appreciate you bringing this. I just want to put on record, I thought it was a really good workshop as well. Obviously, economic development, public safety, homelessness is a priority for me, although my votes went to youth and climate and racial equity. But just wanted to reiterate, as we're looking at the work plan and our benchmarks, that when we talk about public safety, to ensure that we have a shared definition, I know that before I came on council, this mayor and council redefined public safety, then more than just police and fire. And I want to make sure that, as we're moving forward, that we have shared definitions around public safety. That's really key to what we do, right? Because all of us can see public safety from a different lens, and making sure that we have shared definition is important. So just wanted to share that and make sure that we uplift that resolution that was passed. Before I came onto the City Council, that public safety is more than just police and fire. It is public health that is supporting our young people and violence prevention. So I just wanted to put that on record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thanks, Mayor. And I really appreciate the work. I do think that while we have overarching the three priorities that we adopted, and now you're putting more substance to the process that's going to be applied to flesh out and operationalize those priorities, they aren't the only things we will, obviously, they're not the only things we will spend money on or do. And so I'm curious whether you're at a point where you've thought through, do these same foundational principles and strategic goals then apply to those things that aren't on the list? Or is there something separate that will apply to them?
The point of the strategic goals and foundational principles is that they apply to everything we do.
Okay.
So it is to encompass, right? We have employees who may not see themselves reflected in those three things. Those are the three council priorities. When we talked about it at our workshop, 90% of the day-to-day work we do is the all-day, every-day, and we wanted to ensure that everybody saw reflected, community and employees, these big strategic goals for what we do all day, every day, and how we do it, those foundational principles.
I appreciate that answer, and I think it's important. I think it's actually important that we underscore that for the very reason you're talking about, that there are a lot of folks working for the city who are going to look at these three priorities as that we've highlighted and said, well, wait a minute, that's not what I do. And so we certainly don't want them to feel as if their work isn't important, or that they're being overlooked or forgotten. So I appreciate the response that the principles and the goals will apply to all the work that we're doing. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Maple?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Madam City Attorney, for all the, I don't have a lot of reading. City manager, I'm sorry. This has already been a long day, and we haven't even gotten to the closed session before the 5:00 PM. But I thank you for all the work on this. I know this has been something that has been in the works and desired for many, many years in different forms. And I know that it really helps you, it helps the rest of our staff and the organization be able to understand what the priorities are, where do we put our energy, and also what are the things that we say no to, or not right now to, because I think that that can definitely be a problem in organizations, when you have everything as a priority, you have nothing as a priority. And we have certainly suffered from that at times. And so I think this is a really helpful exercise for me as well, to understand what my colleagues care about. I think walking out of this, one of the things that was a little bit surprising in a really positive way to me was that the number-one priority from this council is economic development. Walking into that meeting, I probably would not have guessed that, to be even in the top three, and that was number one. And so that's great, because that tells us all, hey, we care about this a lot. We know that we can't just, you know, tax our way out of a budget issue. We need to make sure that we're growing businesses and making sure they thrive. And so one just request that I have of our city management and of our council is that, on the topic of economic development, that we work on creating a strategy, an economic development strategy for the city, working with our business community, working with groups like GSAC and Regent Business and Metro Chamber, and also all of our small businesses, to make sure that we have a real strategy that we're putting into place on this number-one issue. And so I just wanted to make that request and say thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We have two, do we have a motion on this? So moved and second. We have a motion, a second, and two public speakers on this. Please call them.
Thank you, Jasmine Ward, and then Lambert. I mean, we do have a motion by Councilmember Kaplan and a second by Maple. Jasmine?
Yes, thank you for your patience, Jasmine. Hope you learned a lot last four hours.
Absolutely, I did. So my name is Jasmine Ward. I'm the Vice President of Marketing and Communications at the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. I'm here in strong support of adopting these three priorities outlined today, especially the focus on economic development. So really excited to hear that is the number-one priority for the council. Expanding the job base and growing revenue is not optional for the city. It's essential as you think about the future. And economic development is one of the most effective tools that the city has to strengthen not only its long-term fiscal health, but also the well-being of its residents. We're already seeing clear opportunities for Sacramento through advanced industries like manufacturing, semiconductors, and beyond. The opening of Aggie Square this past spring is a strong example. It shows what's possible when the city, higher education, and the private sector align. This innovation district will anchor high-wage jobs, attract research activity, and spark new company formation in the city. And we also need a focus on reviving our downtown. With many state workers still remote, we're seeing the impact on safety, homelessness, and the small businesses that make our urban core vibrant. Bringing more employers and workers downtown fills vacant space, creates more eyes on the street, supports retail and restaurants, and restores that sense of safety and activity to the area. Economic development is the path to achieving that. Adopting these priorities sends a clear message that Sacramento is ready to compete for the next generation of employers and the investment that follows. A stronger economy will give the city the resources it needs to address homelessness, improve public safety, and create opportunity for residents in every neighborhood. On behalf of GSAC, I urge you to adopt these priorities and keep economic development at the center of the city's strategy.
Thank you for your comments. Lambert is our final speaker on this item.
I don't see Lambert. Oh, there is. Turn on up, Mr. Lambert.
September 28th, and I would really appreciate it if the entire rostrum would pay attention, because you are being paid to be here. And the public, I know I'm not, so pay attention to this. On September 28th, I actually attended the press conference of the incoming city manager. And somebody gave me something that all of you should be aware of. And I see people talking, but it's going to come back to haunt you if you don't really pay attention. While I was there, a lady handed me something, and I can't show it to the rostrum, but it's to the public. It says negotiated term sheet. to the public, it says negotiated term sheet. And when they handed this to me, I studied it, and while everybody was excited and in a love feast with this new incoming city manager, and it's really a shame that the people are not listening to this, but it's going into the record anyway. In her term sheet, it says no cause termination. Now, what a no cause termination is, I've never heard of that as an employed person over the years of my life. What that means is that a group of city staff can get together and they can terminate this incoming city manager for no cause. I've never heard of no cause, and she would only receive nine months' base pay. What does that mean to somebody that's alert like me? That means she has a three-year contract, but she wouldn't get the two years because some people got organized at City Hall and terminated her for no cause. And I hope she's listening, because her and her lawyer, if they signed this, they should be ashamed of themselves, and if they haven't, they should send me a check for bringing it to their attention.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. Okay, thank you, no more public comments. We have a motion, a second, on our council priorities for 2026. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
He knows there are abstentions, seeing none, measure passes. We're going to continue the waterfront item till the 2nd of December, and we're going to hear one final item relating to our acting OPA director.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So we'll continue item 38 to December 2nd. So the item 39 is the appointment of Jody Johnson as Acting Director of the Office of Public Safety Accountability. And so, again, item 39 is setting the salary and other terms and conditions of employment for Jody Johnson, who was appointed on October 21st, 2025, as the Acting Director of the Office of Public Safety Accountability. While serving in the acting role, Mr. Johnson's rate of pay will be $84.92 per hour. He will receive all of the benefits to which he was entitled while serving as the Assistant Director of the Office of Public Safety Accountability as outlined in the personnel resolution covering unrepresented officers and employees. And I have no speakers on this item.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
He knows there are abstentions, seeing none, item passes.
Let's see, I'm assuming we're going to not go to council comments, ideas, and questions. I do have... Perfect. Did you want to do your AB 1, 2, 3 report, and then I have four speakers for matters not on the agenda.
Can we do it after the council meeting, this late night?
No, because I'm recused.
Oh, that's right, yeah, yeah.
I want to do my AB 1, 2, 3, 4. I was invited to speak, and I represented the City of Sacramento at the 7th China Sister City Conference in Hangzhou to talk about our cultural and student exchange that we have with our sister city, Gnon, in China, that is seen as an exemplary standard for student and cultural exchange, which I was happy to present and got some great ideas, saw some things, visited some amazing battery, electric, AI factories of what China is doing, definitely eye-opening, and that's my 1, 2, 3, 4. Oh, and then, from Gnon, I gave to everybody, this is a reusable bag, and then if you do hiking, the circle is for a wet-dry towel that you can use. There was a lot of sustainability in China, believe it or not.
Thank you. I have four speakers for matters not on the agenda, Lambert, John Ju, Lisa Sanchez, and Lisa Bates. So please line up in the aisle, I'm assuming some people may have left.
Okay, I'm going to speak on what's coming at 5:00. It's going to be honoring the Hmong community, and as a person who's of age, who remembers the Vietnam War, a lot of people have forgotten about the blacks that were drafted into the Vietnam War. They were drafted into the war because they couldn't go to college, but yet, when they returned, they didn't get their benefits from the GI Bill. A lot of people have forgotten that, and it is my understanding that the Hmong community were involved in a secret war with the CIA during Vietnam. That's a known fact. I've even heard my vang say that they don't have a country because they can't go home and then they're here. My point is that I'm old enough to remember the Vietnam vets. See, that's the thing, a lot of people don't really know my age, but I'm very aware of that, and I don't really think that until the black soldiers who, when they returned, they couldn't get their GI Bills, they couldn't get their education, the actual Hongs are part of a resettlement program where they're benefiting, and they were not fighting in the United States, they were fighting in Vietnam. Most of them cannot go home. I have a lot of Hmong friends that have told me this, I didn't know this till they enlightened me. It's good to be enlightened because then you can't be deceived. So that's coming up next at 5:00, and I wanted to put my protest in that the black GI should receive the same benefit.
Thank you. John Ju, is John still here? Lisa Sanchez, then Lisa Bates.
Thank you. I wanted to speak on item agenda number 25. I was happy to see that there was the Lower American River design that's going to be implemented for the June Vinyl Salmon Rearing Projects, again, in the Lower American River, something we're very happy about. I've been, you know, reading about the Water Forum and know very well about them, but what I would like to actually request is that we have the same or something similar to this for Steelhead Creek. It was actually just identified today that there was salmon, a 30-inch salmon swimming up Arcade Creek over behind American River College I was out there with today, and knowing that salmon are actively swimming up not only Arcade Creek, which is not a known, a big-known salmon habitat restoration, but Steelhead Creek is. Steelhead Creek runs up through Dry Creek, over by Roseville, and a lot of salmon spawn up there. Last year, I had the privilege of being able to do a salmon count with the Dry Creek Conservancy, and it went from four salmon the year prior to 208 last year, and we're hoping to be able to have an exorbitant amount of salmon count this year that we will be doing. So with the number of salmon habitat restoration projects that are in the American River, lower, and regular American River upper, we would love to be able to start implementing money, resources, and priority to Steelhead Creek as well. So thank you so much and appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And Lisa Bates will be our final speaker for matters not on the agenda.
Good evening, council. Lisa Bates with Sacramento Steps Forward, your lead applicant for the Sacramento Continuum of Care. Just real quickly, want to share with you that today in your inboxes, you received some information about the HUD Notice of Funding Availability that comes out every year. Can't hear me? Louder. This NOFO has substantial changes in it and creates quite a bit of both challenges and opportunities for our community. We are hosting a community meeting Thursday night, virtually, from 5:00 to 7:00, so encourage you to attend if you can, also willing to give you a briefing. We are working closely with your staff, particularly Yaoyan and Brian Pedro, so this NOFO is going to require an all-in effort between the county, the city, and SHRA. I understand, maybe you had some questions earlier of SHRA. So more to come, but just wanted to make sure I made you aware of the work that we're underway with, and again, any opportunity we can do to meet with you more extensively or deeply about what this NOFO presents, be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. That concludes public comments, that concludes the 2:00 council meeting. We're going to adjourn briefly to closed session, our clerk will read that. We hope to be there 15, 20 minutes max and get back for the 5:00 p.m. council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. We are adjourning to closed session. We have a quorum of council members and chambers. There are two items on the agenda, we're only going to hear the first item this evening. I have no speakers for any items on the closed session agenda. That one item we will hear this evening is Conference with Labor Negotiators Government Code, Section 54957.6. Designated representatives are Shelley Banks-Robinson, Aaron Donato, and Tim Davis. Employee organizations are Sacramento City Exempt Employees Association, Sacramento Police Officers Association, International Union of Operating Engineers, Stationary Engineers Local 39, Sacramento Area Firefighters Local 522, Sacramento City Area Building and Construction Trades Councils, Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local 447, Auto Marine and Specialty Painters Local 1176, Western Council of Engineers, International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, and all unrepresented groups. So, Mayor, you may adjourn to closed session. We are adjourning to closed session, we should be back.